Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held at NYC City Planning Commission hearing room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, February 13, 2019. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony, please identify yourself, limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak clearly into the microphone. I will now call the role. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles. Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Delauss.
Here.
Commissioner Duette. Commissioner Edie. Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, January 30, 2019.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Scheduling on calendar numbers 1 through 16, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, February 27, 2019, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission hearing room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 81. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 17 through 20. Calendar number 17, CD8, N190045ZAX. Calendar number 18, N190046ZAX. Calendar number 19, N190047ZAX. Calendar number 20, N190048ZCX. In the matter of applications for a grant of authorizations and certification concerning 695 West 246th Street Goldberg residence, for adoption on calendar number 17, 18, 19, and 20. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles. Oh, he's not here. Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie. No, Commissioner Duette. Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 17, 18, 19, and 20. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 21, CD4, C190078HAK. In the matter of an application for a U-Dob designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning 63 Stockholm Street, for a favorable report on calendar number 21. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss. Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie. Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 21. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 22, CD10, C190094PCM. In the matter of an application for the site selection and acquisition of property concerning Joseph Daniel Wilson Memorial Garden, for a favorable report on calendar number 22. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 22. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 23, CD12, N190233HKM. In the matter of a communication concerning the landmark designation of the Park Terrace West Historic District, for adoption on calendar number 23, for referral to the City Council. Chair Lago.
Before casting my vote, I just want to note that Commissioner Marin was recused from the Stockholm Street vote, and so it should be noted as a recusal.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then I vote yes.
Okay. Vice Chairman, oh, I'm sorry, he's still not here. Commissioner Capelli. Commissioner Cerulo.
I mean, yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Cerulo.
I'm sorry. Cerulo.
This is what happens when Joe is not here.
Okay, Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
No, he's not here.
Oh, okay. Okay, Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 23 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 24, CD3, N190141RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 35 Red Avenue, for adoption on calendar number 24. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 24 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 25, CD3, N190195RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 19 Vale Avenue, for adoption on calendar number 25. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 25 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 26, CD2, N190206ZAR. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 135 Cromwell Circle, for adoption on calendar number 26. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 26 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 27, 28, and 29. Calendar number 27, CD3, N190169ZAR. Calendar number 28, N190170ZAR. Calendar number 29, N190171ZAR. In the matter of application for the grant of authorizations concerning 45 Curverly Avenue, for adoption on calendar numbers 27, 28, and 29. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet. Calendar numbers 27, 28, and 29 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 30 through 33. Calendar number 30, CD2, N190017ZAR. Calendar number 31, N190013ZAR. Calendar number 32, N190014ZAR. Calendar number 33, N190015ZCR. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations and certification concerning 35 Curverly Avenue, for adoption on calendar numbers 30, 31, 32, and 33. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Delauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 30, 31, 32, and 33 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 90.
I'll note that we have been joined by Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I have affirmative votes recorded for the items previously considered?
Thank you.
Okay, the next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 90. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 34, CD2, C190176PQK. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the acquisition of property concerning 460 Atlantic Avenue Child Care and Senior Centers.
We will have a 10-minute team presentation by Allison Grant, Guillermo Pineda, and available for questions, Michael Bittar.
Thank you, Chair Lago and Commissioners. It's good to see you. I'm Allison Grant. I'm the Chief of Staff for ACS's Division of Child and Family Well-Being, and I'm joined by my colleagues at DIFDA and DCAST as well as ACS. I'm here today because we, ACS, are in favor of the continued use of this space at 460 Atlantic Avenue as a daycare center. As you may be aware, this space was designed specifically for childcare services. I'm just going to do a quick little walkthrough of my half of the PowerPoint. As you can see, this is the area it's in, at the corner, right on Atlantic and Nevins. Here's the exterior shot. It's a nice, big, brick building. It very much fits with the neighborhood, nice signage. As you can see, I know it's always a question, they actually have some very nice signage there. On the rooftop, his designs for children to play when it's better weather, though today I think would actually be a day they'd be up there. Here's the interior space, broad, wide hallways, a lot of bright colors, small furniture for children. The spaces are, follow regulations in terms of Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and Department of Buildings. Here's a multipurpose room, some facility space, the kitchen where they cook all their meals and snacks, as well as a bathroom. And then I'll just go back to the classroom before I hand it over. Just briefly, this program at the site is contracted with ACS to provide early learned services for children, which means these children must be at 200% of the poverty level and have a reason for care, such as their parents or guardians working, being in school or in a training program, or they may be homeless or looking for work for up to six months. The program that's currently at the site is Strong Place Daycare. It's been there for some time. They are permitted by Department of Health to serve 114 children. We have contracted them to serve 100 preschoolers, and as of last week, they were at 85% enrollment, which is in line with the system at this point in time. I'm going to hand it over to DIFDA to do their part.
Good morning. So I'm here, my name is Guillermo Pineda. I'm here representing DIFDA. We're really happy with our center. We've been there for a while, and I just wanted to point out a good...
You're used as well.
I get it. I want to go into this slide, right? You can see that even though there is two agencies there, one of them is ADA accessible on the Atlantic side, so I just wanted to point that out. We're very happy with our partners at ACS, but I also wanted to show you our part, the dining room. We serve over 100 meals every day, and this is a very needed feature in the area. We've been there for a while. Usually, our leases are 20-year leases, and this time, I think it will be a 10-year lease, but they're still trying to negotiate that. We have a staff of 23 people who helps us out with the cafeteria and the serving of the lunches. Besides meal services, we do social services and application assistance for entitlement programs and other programs. Here's a picture of the lobby, showing some of our seniors, who are very happy to be here, our billiards room, the lounge area. Again, our cafeteria in one of our parties, kitchen. Like I said, we serve over 100 meals every day, and we have two floors, the cellar and the ground floor. Most of our DIFDA activities are on the cellar and the ground floor. We're accessible, as you saw in the first slide, by public transportation and nearby trains, and hopefully, we'll get a good answer from you guys. Thank you.
And we're both here, as well as our colleagues, if there's any questions that we may answer. Commissioner Capelli. Yes, I noticed that there were sprinklers in some of the rooms and not in others. What is the scope of the sprinklers, and are there plans to fully sprinkle them?
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Bittar. As you know, ACS has taken a serious position with sprinklers, and the scope of work will expand. There is an existing system in the basement, but it will be expanded to include entirely.
In what period of time?
You know how this, I can't really answer that. I'm referring to DCAST because the lease has to be signed and its contingents on many things happen for us before the scope gets executed. Does that answer the question? If not, I will...
Actually, it doesn't.
I really don't have an answer.
I'd like to get an answer, Rob.
We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, Michael.
Commissioner Delauss.
Given the fact that we have a senior facility and a daycare facility located in the same building, are there any intergenerational programming activities that are happening or are planned to happen in the future?
Just introduce yourself.
Hello, good morning. My name is Suya Pavanco Hernandez. I'm the Deputy Director of the Spanish-speaking Aldo Lee Council Raíces.
I'm sorry. When you come up to testify, we can answer at that point. You were signed up to this testify later on.
Oh, I was...
She was supposed to be part of the panel.
Right.
Excuse me?
For questions. I was told that it was for questions.
She was supposed to be part of the group panel presentation.
Oh, okay. And is Christine Stoddard also part of it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That wasn't indicated here. I'm sorry. So then Christine Stoddard and...
Vice Chair.
So please, go ahead.
Yes, we do conduct intergenerational activities with the children upstairs, especially for the holidays, Halloween, Christmas. They do come and interact with the seniors and sing, and we do.
Okay. I was just going to say, that's something we try to do across our entire system. There's a lot of programs that are either in the same building or nearby.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Is there a representative from DCAST?
Yes. Christine Stoddard with DCAST.
Hi. I just wanted to be clear on the lease terms.
Sure.
Because, you know, going back 40 years, there were successive 20-year lease terms. This supposedly is a 10-year lease term.
We're still currently under negotiations. The landlord is not willing at this point to commit to a complete 20-year term. They've agreed to 10. However, we have two five-year renewal options on the table, so there's the potential that it will be 20 years, including the two five-year renewal options.
So my question is, what is departmental policy at this point? Are you seeking 20-year lease terms for these kinds of facilities?
We always seek the longest term possible, yes. We always start out with asking for 20 years with two five-year renewal options. The landlords don't always agree.
I don't think that's entirely clear.
Sure. Is that okay, Vice Chair? So the administration, the mayors at City Hall, they have directed both ACS and DCAST, and I'm sure DIFDA as well, that they want all leases to be 20 years if at all possible. So that is this administration's policy, is to have the longest possible lease term. DCAST has had some great success over the past couple of years. As you've seen, we've been bringing much longer lease terms to you in the presentations since Chair Lago has been in place. So we're hopeful, this one's right now appears to be 10, but might be 20, and we're very hopeful that our colleagues at DCAST will be able to accomplish that for us. But yes, the administration policy is for, hopefully, 20-year leases. We're going in, trying very hard to get there with the commitment from the mayor that these programs are a high priority.
Thank you.
Commissioner Capelli.
The five-year options are whose option?
They would be the City of New York's option, ACS's option.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
As long as Ms. Stoddard is still... Ms. Stoddard is there. First off, I think this is the first time we've heard about the administration's shift from the shorter-term to the longer-term approach, and that's great news to us, so hope it works, especially in these changing neighborhoods. I don't have to tell you that it's great to secure these places that may no longer be available. But following up, I think it was Commissioner Capelli's question about the sprinklers, it sounds like you're still in negotiations with the landlord. So how certain are we that the scope of work is actually going to be achieved? There's some expensive items in here.
So the scopes of work have not been finalized yet, and they are still under negotiations. Once they are, you know, the sprinklers will be in there, no question.
Okay, so that's not a negotiable one?
Right.
Okay.
They will be in there. The next thing we will discuss with the landlord is what the timeframe would be to reach substantial completion.
Okay. And are there other items that, I mean, if you're, you started out thinking a 20-year term, now you're down to 10. Will that affect the amount of work that the landlord, you're able to get the landlord to do on the building?
No, I would say they're both still considered a long-term lease, so the items that are necessary are going to be in there regardless.
Okay. Good luck with the negotiations.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well then, thanks to the applicant team.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak on this item, but if anyone is present who would like to be heard, please come forward now. The public hearing is closed.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 35, CD5, C160226PQK. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the acquisition of property concerning Urban Strategies Daycare Center.
Before we begin this public hearing, I'll just note that we've been joined by Commissioner Edie, who would like to be joined in the affirmative on the votes that were taken.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we have two speakers, and is this a team presentation or separately on this one?
I believe I'll be presenting, and DCAST will be answering questions.
Okay, so it will be Allison Grant with Christine Stoddard available for questions.
Yes. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Allison Grant. For the record, I'm the Chief of Staff for ACS's Division of Child and Family Well-Being. I'm here today as ACS is in favor of the continued use of this space at 1091 Sutter Avenue, Brooklyn, as a daycare center. This space was designed specifically for childcare services, and we hope it will continue as such. Currently, this address is a program that's contracted for early learn. The family is there. It's a childcare and Head Start program, meaning the families earn up to 100% of the federal poverty level. These are some of our most inneed families, and their families/guardians must be either working in school or in a training program, homeless, or looking for work up to six months. I'll just take you through the PowerPoint quickly. This is the area of Brooklyn it is in, the block lot. Here's the exterior of the building. As you can see, great signage there again. It looks like the apartment buildings in the area with the bright, big windows, and you can see the safety fencing on the roof as required. A worker up there have some play area for the kids, which is always great. The interior space, you can see the stairwell is wide and has the proper railing. There's administrative offices. Here's the classroom with some great colors and furniture for children, facility space, and I'll just take us back to the classrooms. This program is permitted by Department of Health to serve 177 children. Our contract is for 139 preschoolers, meaning two- to five-year-olds, and as of last week or this week, they had 91% enrollment, which is actually quite high for this time of year. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions. Commissioner Capelli.
Same question as the last time. I don't see any sprinklers. Are there any plans to do that?
Hi. We do have a revised scope of work in place that is going to include the sprinklers.
And the extent of the sprinkling?
Throughout the entire building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
To the applicant team, I'll note that no other speakers have signed up for this item, but if anyone wanted to be heard, now would be the time to come forward. Public hearing is closed.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 36 and 37. Calendar number 36, CD14, C190053ZMK. Calendar number 37, N190054ZRK. A public hearing in the matter of application for zoning map and zoning tax amendments concerning 1640 Flatbush Avenue rezoning.
We are going to have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team with particularly poor handwriting, so I apologize if I misread the names. It's comprised of Dan Eggers, Harry Sitmar, Aaron Weiner, Hayek Arstamay, no, Harak Arustamyan, and Jay Siegel. Welcome.
Good morning, and I take responsibility for the poor handwriting. Dan Eggers, Land Use Attorney at Greenberg Char, representing the owner of 1640 Flatbush Avenue. We're before you today for a rezoning application that would facilitate the development of a 13-story-plus seller building with commercial use on the first and second floors and residential above. That would include up to approximately 34 units of permanently affordable housing. I'm joined by Harry Sitomer, Representative Alber. I'm also joined to answer any questions you may have by Aaron Warner of AKRF and Hayek Arustamyan of S9 Architecture. Before I present our application, I turn to Harry to say a few words.
Thank you, Dan. My name is Harry Sitomer. I'm a Vice President at SL Green Realty Corp. This is a project that we are very excited about and one that we've spent a lot of time working with the local community, local stakeholders, and look forward to presenting to you today. I'll be available at the end to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant, SL Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. The site is on the west side of Flatbush Avenue at Aurelia Court, next to the Triangle Junction Shopping Center. Up until 2017, it was occupied by a BP gas station. The site is approximately 18,000 square feet. Approximately 15,000 square feet is in a C8-2 zoning district that does not allow residential use. The remaining 3,000 square feet is in an R6 residential district. These districts allow a maximum of 4.8 FAR and have no maximum building height limit. On the right is the proposed zoning, which shows a rezoning of the entire site to a C4-4D district, subject to mandatory inclusionary housing, so that residential use would be permitted on the entirety of the site. That's a C8-4 residential, that's a R8A residential equivalent. At the request of the Department of City Planning, the remainder of the C8-2 district on two adjacent residential properties directly to the west of the development site would be rezoned to an R6 district, so those sites would be uniformly R6. Those properties would conform to zoning, as those currently have residential use. The C4-4D district allows 7.2 FAR, or 2.4 FAR more than the 4-point FAR allowed by current zoning, and has 145-foot or 14-story building height limit for buildings with onsite affordable housing and a qualifying ground floor. Since the site is about 18,000 square feet, approximately 130,000 square feet of floor approximately 130,000 square feet of floor area would be allowed. If the rezoning were approved, our client is proposing to develop a 13-story-plus seller building with 130,000 zoning square feet, that's 7.2 FAR, with 30,000 square feet of commercial use on the ground and second floors. That's about 1.7 FAR. 3.4 FAR of commercial use is permitted, and 100,000 square feet of residential floor area, that's 5.5 FAR. The U-Lip application proposes that the residential floor area would include 30% affordable floor area consistent with option two of the mandatory inclusionary housing program. There'd be approximately 114 units. So if option two applied, there would be approximately 80 market rate and 34 affordable units. We have discussed with Councilmember Williams, and he has requested option one plus potential deeper levels of affordability. We look forward to continuing discussions with Councilmember Williams and his colleagues in the council to finalize the MIH component of the project. Based on conversations with Councilmember Williams and the department, the 13-story portion of the building has been massed along Flatbush Avenue. To be in context with the 20-story Phil Howard buildings across the street, which you see in the background of that slide. And here is a rendering of the building from Flatbush Avenue. As you can see, the 13-story portion's massed along Flatbush. There's a shallow 7-story portion along Aurelia Court, which is intended to provide a transition from the 6-story-plus basement buildings directly to the west, including 3111 Aurelia Court. And here is a site plan. The 7-story portion I just mentioned is only about 35 feet deep. The rest of the building along the western lot line is one or two stories. The 13-story portion is at least 30 feet from the lot line, and this distance increases due to the angled configuration, which you see on the site plan. The building would fully comply with the C4-4D district's regulations. The 7-story, 84-foot base height would comply with the 60-foot minimum and 105-foot maximum base heights. The required 15-foot setback from Aurelia Court, a narrow street, and 10-foot setback from Flatbush Avenue, a wide street, would be provided. And the building would rise to a total height of 13 stories or 142 feet in compliance with the 14-story, 145-foot maximum building height. Zoning requires that parking spaces be provided for 50% of the market rate units. No spaces are required for the affordable units as the site is in a transit zone. One space must be provided for each 1,000 square feet of retail floor area, and this requirement is waived if fewer than 40 spaces would be required. If there'd be approximately 80 market rate and 34 affordable units, 40 spaces would be required. And since there'd be approximately 30,000 square feet of retail use, no spaces would be required for the retail use. The 40 required spaces would be provided below grade in a single level on stackers. It would be attended parking and accessed via a 12-foot-wide curb cut on Aurelia Court, shown on the site plan. The retail uses would generate a requirement for one loading berth, which would be also located on the Aurelia Court frontage and accessed by a 12-foot-wide curb cut, shown there as well. We know this community is underserved by parks and open space. The building would include approximately 2,800 square feet of recreation space that would be accessible to all building residents. We believe there is a sound land use rationale for the rezoning. In view of the surrounding residential uses, access to mass transit, and the need for housing, this site is suited for residential use. And given its location on Flatbush Avenue, we believe this is a site where added density is appropriate. The 7.2 FAR would be 2.4 FAR more than the 4.8 FAR allowed by current zoning. It would be more in line with the 6.5 FAR permitted by the C84 district directly to the north. And the building would be in context as its 13-story height would relate to the 20-story Phil Howard apartments across Flatbush Avenue. We respectfully request your approval and welcome any questions. And in that vein, assuming I still have time left, we were at review session on Monday and took note of Commissioner Dweck's comment that he would like us to speak to the Borough President's recommendation that the project have more family-size affordable units, specifically 50%, two- or three-bedrooms, at least 75%, one or more than one-bedroom units. While the unit mix of the building is subject to change pending finalization of apartment layout and the negotiation of the regulatory agreement with HPD, one preliminary unit mix, in fact, has no studios, approximately 27% one-bedrooms, 53% two-bedrooms, and 20% three-bedrooms, which would satisfy the recommendations of the Borough President. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission? Vice Chair Knuckles.
What is envisioned with regard to the retail? I see you have retail plotted for the first and second floor, 30,000 square feet, which is...
Sure, I'll let Harry talk to that.
Thank you. So we are certainly in conversations with a handful of retailers, some of which are in line with grocery store-type retailers that we know that we've received feedback from the community is very important for the retail use there. And we're also in conversations with retailers, I would say akin to the retailers located at the Target Junction being Target and those types of stores. Additionally, we're in conversations with some medical-type users like a, you know, urgent care center. But again, given the changing retail climate, it's very hard to sign a deal with a retailer before you even have a hole in the, when you have a hole in the ground and you don't even have approval for the site. But we are certainly working with the retailers we have relationships with to try to put them in this location.
Commissioner Deloos.
I'm just wondering, given that this was a former gas station site, I'm assuming that this might be entering into the state's voluntary cleanup program? And if you could talk a little bit about that? And then also, I know that there's conversations still going on with the local council member about the MIH option, but if you could maybe share some background about why it is you were thinking about option two going into this process rather than option one? That would be helpful. And then if we could address the loading zone issue. Obviously, it's on Aurelia Court, and the Borough President specifically asked about possibility shifting it north. So, those three, thanks.
Right, so we'll go in reverse order. So the, we are open to having discussions with the Triangle Junction owner about providing access through their property to the loading berth. That's something that we're open to doing, and we're in the process of reaching out to them. I think you understand that from the standpoint of the retail use, we would rather have that frontage on Flatbush Avenue not interrupted by a loading berth, which is why it's been proposed for Aurelia Court. And I think it also makes sense from a planning perspective not to have it on the wide street. But we're certainly interested in continuing discussions and having discussions with the Triangle Junction owner about getting access through their property.
I certainly agree that adding curb cups to Flatbush Avenue does not, from a planning sense, make any sense at all.
Right. So, Harry?
I'll answer the other two questions. With respect to the affordability option, from our perspective, MIH option two is a more economically viable option, so that is the option that we chose. Of course, we're going to yield to the local council member and his views, and of course, we'll need to work with him to get his approval. So he has asked that we proceed with MIH option one, and that's a dialogue that is very much ongoing and continuing to have with him. And of course, we'll need his blessing before we proceed with the project.
And I would just say, you know, that about 55% of the community residents in the community board are at or below 60% of AMI. So option one would definitely address greater need and have greater overlap with the local affordability levels and income levels.
Understood. And with respect to the cleanup, BP was the former gas station. They did have obligations to clean up. They did not do everything that they were supposed to, and we are in conversations with them on that. However, we are taking on the obligation. We entered into the Brownfield Cleanup Program, and we are committed to getting the site cleaned up as we do with all of our properties throughout New York City.
Commissioner Levin.
Well, Commissioner Deloos ticked off most of my questions here, but I'd like to return for a minute to the question of the retail. Why is it that you have? I mean, I understand that it's too early to tell, and you don't have commitments, but what was your planning thought about having it be two floors rather than just the ground floor? That's obviously something the Borough President wasn't too keen on. But you must have assessed the possibilities for the demand out there and determined that two floors was more desirable. So tell us more about that, please.
Yeah, of course. So, you know, our idea for the retail is to have maybe one or two smaller retail stores, which will likely be more catering to the local needs, for example, urgent care center. And then with respect to the second floor, we envision sort of anchor retailer that has a small ground floor and the entire second floor. That's based on demand that we've seen from retailers that range from supermarkets to sites, you know, akin to, again, the Target Junction-type retailers that need a larger floor plate in order to get the amount of product that they needed within a store. So we are really trying to think about 21st century retailers, the type of retail that would be in this location. We're clearly committed to investing a lot of capital here, and we want to make sure that our capital is going towards occupied retail space and not a vacant space, so that we do think this encapsulates what the demand we've seen from retailers.
And so how changeable might that be? As we get deeper into it and you discover, what happens if you discover maybe you can't do the two floors of retail? Is there, are you maxing out the residential FAR here?
Yes, we are maxing out the residential, so it would just be one less story of retail.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, let me yield to them, actually.
To clarify, we're maxing out the total FAR. What would happen would be, there'd be one fewer story of commercial and an extra story of residential.
So you could get more residential in there?
You could, yes.
Okay.
It would be allowed by zoning, in other words. Yes.
Other questions? Well, then, thanks to the applicant team. We will now turn to speakers who have signed up, starting with Cassandra Carrillo.
Good morning, Chair Lago and members of the Commission. My name is Cassie Carrillo, and I work at 32BJ. I'm here today on behalf of my union to express our support for SL Green's affiliates project at 1640 Flatbush. 32BJ is the largest property service union in the country. We represent over 80,000 members across New York City. Our members clean and maintain buildings like the one being discussed. 32BJ and SL Green have a strong relationship and a track record of partnership at buildings across New York. We are happy to report that SL Green has made a credible commitment to provide good jobs that pay family-sustaining wages to future building service workers at this site. We estimate that the project planned at 1640 Flatbush will generate six building service jobs, and we believe that they could provide an important economic opportunity for members of the surrounding community. We urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Mitch Gibson, who will be followed by Basha Gerhards.
Morning. I'm Mitch Gibson, Chief Program and Economic Development Officer at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. We are pleased to be here today in support of the development of a residential and commercial building at 1640 Flatbush Avenue by SL Green. We take note of some very important elements to the project. Regarding affordable housing, the project will provide 34 units of permanently affordable housing. The housing component will be overseen by a local Brooklyn-based partner, and they will work directly with the community on applications to ensure the neighborhood stays affordable for current residents. Regarding the streetscape and community component, there will be retail on the first and second floors that will provide a lively streetscape that contributes to the area. In addition, the developer will seek to fill the retail space with needs identified by the community. As you know, the space is currently an empty gas station, so we're looking forward to reinvigorating that part of the neighborhood. The project is also, of course, near Flatbush Junction and will contribute to the expansion of the economic development base of that neighborhood. Finally, contextually, the architect has worked to create a contextual design that is complementary to the neighborhood. So for all these reasons, the Chamber is here to support this project, and we look forward to you doing the same. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, and congratulations on the new role.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
Our next speaker is Basha Gerhards, who will be followed by Isaiah Thompson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Basha Gerhards here on behalf of the Real Estate Board of New York. The Real Estate Board of New York is the city's leading real estate trade association representing commercial, residential, and institutional property owners, builders, managers, investors, brokers, salespeople, and other organizations and individuals active in New York City real estate. REBNE strongly supports the approval of the rezoning and related text amendment to apply mandatory inclusionary housing for property located at 1640 Flatbush Avenue in the borough of Brooklyn. The applicant proposes an amendment to the zoning map and to Appendix F of the zoning resolution to change the development site from 682 and R6 districts to a C4-4D or R8A equivalent district. This will regularize the zoning rules for an irregular-shaped lot and facilitate the development of a 13-story mixed-use building containing 114 dwelling units, of which approximately 34 units will be permanently affordable. These proposed changes advance the city's affordable housing goals on a privately-owned site. The affordable housing will be managed by a local Brooklyn nonprofit that pledges to work with the existing community by administering a financial literacy campaign and providing assistance navigating the affordable housing lottery system. In addition to the provision of permanently affordable housing, building service jobs, and jobs related to the provision of 30,000 square feet of commercial space on the first and second floors of the building will be added in the neighborhood. These jobs will be in close proximity to transit hubs, which has been shown to reduce a neighborhood's carbon footprint. The ground-floor retail space will also help to enliven the streetscape. Currently, the street is considered unsafe and unsightly by the empty hazardous gas station that occupies frontage along Flatbush Avenue and Aurelia Court. The applicant has also been responsive throughout the community engagement process. SL Green will uphold their commitment to the community by seeking to fill the first-floor retail area with businesses aligned with the needs of the community, such as a healthcare provider, community facility, or grocery store. When considering the appropriateness of zoning map changes, the Commission is charged with judging whether the changes meet the goals of the city and for text amendments consistency with the zoning resolutions framework. This proposal adds density to a site well-served by transit and advances other important policy goals. The provision of permanent affordable housing meets a central tenet of the Mayor's Housing New York Plan, and the change to the zoning text is consistent with other similar proposals that have come through U-LRP. We therefore urge the City Planning Commission to approve the actions under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Isaiah Thompson, who will be followed by Morgan Pearlman.
Greetings. My name is Isaiah Thompson, and I'm the Policy Research and Urban Planning Fellow at the New York Building Congress. On behalf of the Building Congress, I would like to express our organization's strong support for SL Green and their project at 1640 Flatbush. The Building Congress is made up of over 400, 500 organizations and comprises more than 250,000 professionals. than 250,000 professionals. For almost 100 years, we've advocated for investment in infrastructure, pursued job creation, and promoted ambitious public-private partnerships in the New York City area. 1640 Flatbush sets an important precedent for responsible development, and SL Green has already demonstrated that they are stewards for suitable to carry out this project. And downtown Brooklyn has witnessed remarkable transformation over the past few years. We strongly believe that 1640 Flatbush continues the growth and development in this area while ensuing that ensuring that the lives of local residents are enhanced concurrently. We are proud of SL Green's efforts to increase the affordability of affordable housing in the city and their partnership with the local Brooklyn nonprofit, Brucea Builders. They will oversee the affordable housing component and will work directly with the community on applications to ensure that the neighborhood remains affordable and for the current residents there. The transformation of 1640 Flatbush from a gas station and convenience store to a beautiful and affordable property is the type of sustainable urban development we love to see. And the project will set a new standard for mixed-use projects in the borough, and the Building Congress strongly supports this project, and we encourage you to do the same. Thank you for your time and your input in this matter.
Thank you. Questions? Thanks. Our next speaker will be Morgan Pearlman.
My name is Morgan Pearlman, and I'm here representing the Association for a Better New York, ABNE, a 47-year-old civic organization that promotes the effective cooperation of public and private sectors to improve the quality of life for all New Yorkers. On behalf of ABNE, thank you for the opportunity to express our support of the proposed redevelopment of 1640 Flatbush as proposed by SL Green. The project proposes a mixed-use project, including retail, 34 units of permanently affordable housing, and a community-oriented use to be determined in partnership with the community. In addition to the transit-oriented development nature of the project that fits within the city's overall plans for smart growth, we believe that the proposal will provide significant improvements to the immediate vicinity. By replacing a gas station with the mixed-use development, the project would provide continuous street-level use and would add activity to what is currently a gas station, a use that creates heavy intersections between pedestrians and automobiles on a main Brooklyn thoroughfare. Although there is a borough-wide concern to maintain the number of gas stations within accessible distances to drivers, the neighborhood will have many viable alternatives. The proposed development will also match the immediately adjacent uses at Triangle Junction while providing a transition to retail buildings surrounding the site. To help with the affordability crisis we are facing in our city, we need to continue to create capacity for housing development in all areas of the city for all income levels. However, given the congestion and strains on our infrastructure we see today, in addition to the anticipated demand we expect by the over 9 million New Yorkers by 2040, it becomes imperative to focus and promote reasonable and contextual growth in areas that are well-served by public transit as this area of Flatbush Avenue. The 1640 Flatbush proposal is sensitive to the surrounding buildings and is architecturally coherent with existing buildings in the area. We urge city planning to approve this mixed-use proposal. Thank you again, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Those are the only speakers who have signed up for this hearing, but if there's anyone else present who'd like to be heard, please come forward. This public hearing is closed.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 38 and 39. Calendar number 38, CD8, C180042ZMK. Calendar number 39, N180043ZRK. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1010 Pacific Street rezoning.
We'll have a 10-minute presentation by the applicant team comprised of Richard Lobel, Christian—I cannot make heads or tails of the handwriting, so—per Christian—Jason Blauvelt, and Jay Valgore.
I'll note that three of the four speaker cards were written clearly. Constantly raising the bar. Good morning. Richard Lobel from Sheldon Lobel, presenting the application for the 1010 Pacific Street rezoning. I intend to present with regards to the land use considerations of the application and then to hand it over to Jay Valgore, who will discuss some of the architectural and contextual aspects. So what do we note about this rezoning? This rezoning would take an M11 zoning district and would affect 12 lots on Pacific Street and Classen Avenues going in 440 feet west from Classen, and would convert those to an R7D with a C24 overlay. So when we look at the zoning district, we note that in 2013, in the Crown Heights West rezoning, all or a portion of 18 blocks to the south and southeast of this property were rezoned to R7A with inclusionary housing. And so during that time, it's really kind of interesting to note—if you look at the background of the zoning in the area— one of the statistics we got was that between 2007 and 2017, of 300 applications filed at the Department of Buildings for conforming development, only three were filed within these eight M11 blocks, and of those, none began construction prior to that time. So this is an area where there's continually increasing housing pressure, as shown from the influx of residents to the area, but the housing stock has not kept pace. So the rezoning here would rezone these—this block and these lots—to an R70C24. This would, of course, permit for an FAR of 5.6 for residential with required ground-floor non-residential uses. It's interesting also to note that when you look at this block in general, because obviously there's other rezonings in the area and there's varied zoning districts, you look at the gray on this—and dark gray on the zoning—on the land use map, and it really strikes you that more than 50% of the lots on this block are either open or vacant uses. This is a block which really has no existing context, and so when we look at the R70, we expect that we are—in some sense—are providing a context for a block which is in an area which needs housing. You'll also note that there are residential areas around this, so there is multifamily housing in the area of this property. But again, this area is one where residential units are needed. And again, we have the zoning change map here, which shows the delineation of the rezoning. This rezoning for 1010 is one of a small number of rezonings, which initiated actually all the way back in 2015. So we looked back in the records and saw that our initial meeting with the department was in February of 2015. These have been on the burner for over four years now. And so we understand, obviously, that we're looking at the M1 Crown study area and that there are changes that are afoot. We do know, however, that this applicant and this project has basically been benefited by the ability to attend the M1 Crown meetings, to engage with not just the community but also with the council member, and to really see what would be a productive development for the site. So again, as we scroll through some of the photos, we note that there are primarily on the block open and vacant uses, and within the 12 lots encompassed by the project area, we have primarily one-story, two-story, some three-story, but primarily low-lying manufacturing and commercial buildings. Again, this is in an area and along a corridor on Pacific Street where you have a wide, narrow street at 70 feet. This is in an area where there are pockets of retail, which would benefit from additional retail on the ground floor. And again, an area where this community board in particular has been determined to be more rent burden than Brooklyn home—Brooklyn community districts on average, as well as the city of New York in general. So I think with regards to the particulars of the project development, I would turn over to Jay Valgore. We would just note that, of course, the development here would permit this 11-story building—it would be a mixed-use building—with ground-floor community and commercial uses and residential units, above which Jay can discuss with more specificity.
Thank you. I'm Jay Valgore. I'm the Principal of Studio V Architecture. I'm a licensed architect and certified planner. I'm very honored to testify before the commission. I'm also actually working with your commission, was appointed by the mayor to sit on your waterfront management advisory board to assist pro bono in the city's 10-year waterfront plan. So on 1010 Pacific, the main things we want to touch on here, looking at this project, as Richard spoke about, is really what would justify the zoning, the density for the R70 in this very, very transit-oriented neighborhood with tremendous need for housing. The existing street conditions, the existing buildings—and you'll see in the photos that will follow—are unfortunately very poor. Many of the buildings are vacant. It's very unusual, the street stands apart from its surrounding context. In addition, there are numerous buildings, including mid-block buildings, that are 14-story residential, 12-story residential, 10-story residential, existing just within a few blocks. I'll show you some pictures of that. The idea of creating an outstanding community facility is a very important part of our proposal. We've worked closely—as Richard said—for four years with the local councilwoman, who has given us tremendous input and advice, and with her staff, on creating a community facility for this project. In addition to that, of course, we'd like to support the administration's goals for more affordable housing. We have tried to work and benefited from the input of the community by including some commercial property here in addition to the community facility, some commercial uses just at the ground floor, as is mandated under the R70. And finally, we've tried to come up with a creative design, which is very important to us, that has an unusual massing that breaks down the scale of the project, creates something very unusual, and incorporates part of the history and character of the neighborhood, including this small warehouse building, which is of architectural merit. It has no level of landscape or landmark protection, but we elected to keep that and include that as part of the history and memory of the neighborhood and to incorporate the art center within that, which we felt would be a very interesting way to really keep some of the scale and some of the material and some of the history and context of this community. So the commission has seen the plans, and I won't dwell on them. This shows a close-up where we've actually bridged over the structure. We're creating a small garden on top of it. We've worked closely with the councilwoman and already speaking to different arts groups. Of course, we'd have to get the commission's input, but we'd like to make a commitment to one of those local neighborhood groups in conjunction with the councilwoman. And this is an overall plan of the building, which has some unusual massing strategies, as is proposed within the R70, in order to have additional setbacks that shows how the massing wraps around this existing historic structure in an interesting and hopefully creative way that breaks down the massing of it. The sections show in many ways. This illustrates the garden over the existing building, and we've actually done additional setbacks in the proposal beyond those required. So we conform fully to the R70, but we've done additional setbacks and articulations beyond what is required in order to really articulate the massing in a pleasing way, which we think is very important to the proposal. We've incorporated parking, but entirely within the cellar. We've been very careful to create a very active streetscape, because we know it's so important for this community to create something that will really engage the street in a street that is very—that does not have a lot of use today. And I think the art center, which will have a committed tenant, will really help activate the street, and as Richard said, help create the context for unfortunately one part of the community that is lacking in activity. And then finally, these are some images that show the surrounding buildings, including some that are 14-story, 12-story. So for example, Bergen Street, just a few blocks away, existing 14-story multifamily residential, 12-story to the left on Prospect Place. These are all existing conditions within just a few blocks, many of which are mid-block conditions. So we think that there is ample precedent, an example, that really supports the density and the R70. Finally, two last drawings. This shows a view of the street as it would be. Unfortunately, you can see the vacant buildings on the left, but it really creates a much more varied scale from the streetscape by incorporating the historic building, which you can see in the center on the right side of the drawing. And this is a view of the proposed community facility art center that we're working so closely with the councilmen to do. Thank you.
Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes.
Great. Turning it over for questions. Commissioner Del Os.
Richard, I appreciate you giving the background about how long this project has been on the burners. And I also know that the M Crown discussion at the community has also equally been on the burner. So I'm just wondering, considering that you all had a chance to participate in those discussions, you know, there's quite a bit of variance between what the community has proposed, especially with regard to the residential FAR versus what you all are proposing. So I'm wondering—I mean, you spoke a little bit to it, and I certainly know the demand for housing, but I'm wondering, was it just the demand, or what else, you know, do you think justifies such a significant difference between the residential FAR that you guys are outlining and what the community has outlined?
So I think that during the course of discussions, there was kind of a genesis of the M Crown findings and the committee findings, and obviously, we have representatives from the community board here who are going to talk to that. But basically, what we took away from those conversations when designing the project were two things. The first was that an FAR of an R70 was not objectionable during the process. So there were statements that were made in the course of discussions where it was understood that a 5.6 was an appropriate density. And then the second thing was, of course, what do you do with use? Because part of the contingency of that use was that there were very specified uses, particularly manufacturing uses and light manufacturing, which would be sought. So with regards to just starting off on the uses, this building and this project comports with R70C24 zoning, which requires pursuant to the C24 designation, non-residential uses on the ground floor. So it creates a balance. It creates a 4,500-square-foot community center, as discussed by Jay. It creates greater than 7,000 square feet of commercial space. But as far as the bulk is concerned, I think that we looked at the area, we looked at what the community board had requested at the time and what they were looking at, and so we took that R70 and said, okay, we're building this project, we'd like to build this project. Can we do this project as a mixed-use development with that mix of uses? And the answer that was increasingly returned to by the development team was no. That while there is a demand for light manufacturing in areas of the city, the concept of doing a light manufacturing mixed-use development with residential in this location was not going to work. And so we appreciated the R70 design, and we ended up with this, which essentially has the ability to retain elements of the existing street front. It was always something which was desirable, to keep this building as an art center. And again, we did go back and forth with the councilmember on this many times, but given the fact that the existing block—that there are so many vacant lots on this block, and the fact that we really would be defining this block—we looked, as Jay said, in the area, saw these higher-density buildings, looked at the fact that this is a transit-rich area, as Jay mentioned, the fact that there's four bus lines, the CNS subway lines, which are serviced at the station on Franklin and Fulton. And that's what we really came to. That's what we came to as far as the R70. It is a project which we would like to see built. It's something where many projects have just gone by the wayside. Again, I found—and we do land use, and so we look at Department of Buildings reports and such—I found that to be very compelling about the fact that for a 10-year period, there were 300 conforming applications filed in this community district, and three of them were for the M11, and as of 2017, none of them hadn't been built. So that's really kind of informed our conversation, and we understand that one of the two goals of the M1 Crown resolutions as issued in 2015 was affordable units. You are taking lots here, and you're essentially maximizing the number of these units that can be brought to an area which is experiencing population growth without a corresponding growth in units.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure—I appreciate what you're sharing, and I guess the conclusion was that because the belief that the current M1 zone was underutilized or had vacant land, that a modern-day manufacturing space in a mixed-use building wouldn't work? That was the conclusion?
The conclusion was that to put—the—that in that 5.6 envelope, to put the mix of commercial and manufacturing uses with residential, as was dictated by the M1 Crown study, would not work. And that's not—it's not done lightly. You know, we—I found—from a land use perspective, to attend these M1 Crown meetings to be very enlightening. I thought it was—I thought that the community board had wonderful ideas with regards to this. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the co-chairs of the Land Use Committee. They really—they got it. I mean, they wanted to innovate, and they wanted to do that. At the end of the day, when we looked at this and looked at this as a development, we basically said, you know, we want something to be built here. And so that's the understanding, and we would like to take part in the M1 Crown discussions going forward. Some of the most, I think, productive conversations was to actually bring developers into the M1 Crown meetings, as well as to the department, and to say, you know, what's happening on the ground? Like, what's the demand here, and what's going to actually get built? And this was the result of that.
And did you have any—the development team have any discussions with potential manufacturing—light manufacturing users?
They did. They are a development team, which basically does development and constructions, so they're well-versed in building buildings, they're well-versed in uses in the area. And, you know, particularly with the fact that this conforms with the non-residential requirement, I think that if you—if you—you know, if you didn't have the community facility here, there may be a different type of feel to this project. But I think that with the 7,000 square feet in this mixed-use building, you know, we look at different areas of the city, and we look at manufacturing demand, and we look at mixed-use buildings in different areas of the city. It didn't really feel like this was going to work in this building and in this—and in this area. But again, there are other projects, I'm sure, which may be able to figure it out. It just wasn't—it didn't look like it was going to work at this spot.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. You know, much has been made of and discussed with respect to the need for housing and affordable housing as well in this neighborhood. So I'm curious about the decision to—and I understand some of the decision to include ground-floor retail is in part because it's restricted—residential is restricted on the ground floor under the zoning designation you've selected. But I'm not sure I quite understand the rationale of, you know, putting nearly 16,000 square feet of commercial space, which frankly, when you look at a land use map, is rather isolated. The C24 overlay along Washington and Atlantic both speak to really coherent commercial districts, you know, that we obviously want to support. And, you know, so I'd just like to get some understanding about why that decision was made to select this option, and I understand the conundrum.
Sure.
But I'd like to talk about that and tease it out.
So we've got a total lot area here, plus or minus of 24,000 square feet. Of that 24,000 square feet, we've got a 4,500-square-foot ground-floor community facility space in the art center, and roughly 7,600 square feet for commercial. So the larger number doesn't take into account the fact that while we're not permitted to have residential use on the ground floor, we do use a portion of the ground floor for accessory residential to reach the residential portion, as well as for parking spaces, all complying with the—and conforming to the R70C24 designation. For that 7,600 square feet of commercial, that—we feel confident that we can populate that space. I didn't discuss in this presentation the fact that this—that it was important to us to map this to Classen Avenue. So in particular, mapping this to Classen Avenue, which is a more typical corridor for R70C24, by bringing it over, it allows us to really what amounts to extend what would be a commercial frontage all the way to Classen. And so we do think that, given the square footage that we're looking at for the commercial, that there's enough pockets of local retail that we'll be able to occupy that. I do agree that if this was—if this was a 24,000-square-foot lot that was providing 22,000 square feet of commercial space, the conversation may be different. I do think that, given the amount of commercial space here, given the pockets of retail in this area, and kind of the demand for local retail, that we would be able to do that in this space.
And what is that—you know, how is that decision made? I mean, who's determining whether there's market demand?
Well, I mean, it's a conversation that's happened internally, and it's one where we've looked at the square footages and said, okay, these are individuals who are familiar with the area, and we said, go and make your determination with regards to whether or not this amount of square footage can be supported.
Talk to brokers?
To brokers, to local business owners, to other commercial developments, to see whether or not we can populate that space. We're fairly confident that we can do it. It's a—you know, it's a nice—what is it really? It's an overlay district which provides nice commercial retail that will service the local residential. We're confident, given that—you know, and it doesn't even need to be commercial space. You can also have community facility office space, you can have doctors' offices. We're confident that the mix of uses in this building works, and that we'll be able to populate that space. It doesn't amount to be a tremendous amount of space.
It's mid-block.
It is mid-block.
You know, and the decision, I think, to—or to pursue retail mid-block, you know, in an area that has a real mixed character, you know, immediately adjacent. In fact, in that rendering, you know, there's a residential building next door. You know, you're changing the character of that block and setting, you know, a precedent for something that, you know—I'm not quite sure that that really makes sense from my perspective, but I understand that, you know, we might have a difference of opinion, you know, and the potential to get more units, frankly. You know, I understand the situation that we're in. I wish that that weren't the case.
I understand, and I think that the—you know, we're looking at development with 145 units overall, roughly 39 to 40 affordable. I think that when you did—when we looked at the 2015 initial resolution from the M1 Crown discussion from their committee, that there was units, residential units, and there were jobs, and there were—you know, and so there was also a discussion of— And there were, you know, and so there was also discussion of the types of jobs and the fact that they wanted better jobs. And so while this may, again, I'm sure that they will have much to say, and this may not rise to the level of manufacturing or light manufacturing that they desire, we do feel that the limited amount of commercial will lead to local jobs and the ability to house local retail and office.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd add, the ground floor that I just pulled up might help clarify. So you can see over here to the right, these are entirely accessory residential uses. So there are entrances to the parking, lobby and lounge area. The community facility represents a large section of it. So that's nearly half of the frontage. So half of the frontage is to a dedicated tenant and community facility use, as well as the accessory use. The commercial, at least, which is a clean contiguous floor plate, is shown immediately adjacent here. And if I go forward just to the perspective to show it in the context of the community, working with input from city planning staff, we incorporated elements to really try to incorporate that into the scale of the neighborhood. So as you can see, we also want to be sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood. These are actual photos kind of showing the context. And we hope that, frankly, we will be the catalyst to create more active and more appropriate ground-floor uses adjacent to us, because most of the ground floors, if you will, today, unfortunately, except for a few, are boarded up or closed off.
Commissioner Deloos.
So what do you envision, then, for the commercial uses? I mean, honestly, I look at this, and to me, it says restaurant. Like, I mean, it seems like it's set up in that way. And obviously, I know there's a lot of demand for that kind of thing in the area. I'm just wondering if that's what your intention is? And again, if that's, whether or not that's the appropriate mid-block use.
I think we run into a dilemma, which we usually run into, which is the ability to plan out for particular tenants when we have the EULAR process and the uncertainty inherent in that. But I think that there's a concept that it would be smaller retail, local retail. Obviously, it's nice to have a contiguous space like that, but I don't think that restaurant would be, I wouldn't limit it to say that that would be the primary use, or even one that would be necessarily the choice here. I think that, you know, without overstepping, I think that to have local stores, local food stores, even a small local restaurant within a portion of the space, I think that that would lend itself to the use here. Again, we're looking at bringing in a residential population here on this block, and so we expect that this would really necessarily service the tenants in that building.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Just to follow up on that, are you designing for a restaurant? Because you would need venting.
You know, to be quite frank with the commission, we don't design for any particular tenant when we've spent four years trying to go through the process of reaching a consensus. So we haven't really lined up a secret tenant that's ready to take this space.
No, that's not what I'm asking. You know, in order to enable a restaurant tenant, you would need to vent that space. So are you planning to vent?
So in the EULAR, to answer you directly, it's easy to accommodate that or not. That requires black iron and a shaft, which isn't part of the EULAR documents, so we haven't gone to that level.
But you haven't made that decision yet?
No. So we've designed it really to be flexible, and as council said, to really accommodate the broadest range of uses. We all know that even today, when retail is challenged, Brooklyn is actually known for having an unusual and broad range of local retail. And I think it would be terrific to incorporate that. And we have not limited it to any particular use. We're very open to a range of different commercial uses for it.
Because food is obviously the sector that's doing quite well now. If you're going to, you would want to enable that use.
I'm confident we, if you look at Bergen, which is one block away, which is a mid-block food use, which is enormously successful, it's actually in the surrounding community, and it's very vibrant. I think that testifies that there is mid-block, successful retail in this area. B-E-R-G-N is that recent, you know, was built a few years ago, and I think that's a great example. So we haven't limited it to one tenant, but that absolutely would work. And I think that would enliven the community if that was, you know, appropriate.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yes. How long has your collective client owned this property?
Well, it's between four and a half and five years.
OK. So the property was acquired when this conversation about the M-CROWN plan, city plannings looking at the area, was just getting underway.
Correct.
So certainly aware that there was some discussion to be had about what scale was appropriate at this location.
Sure.
And I think you now have the city plannings framework and the community board's, the M-CROWN plan, which both express a preference for, or a momentum toward lower density on the mid-block. I think the chair has made the department's point of view about this perfectly clear at certification and at the review session. So I'm curious to know more about the strategic decision to move ahead with this application at this time.
Sure.
Because it does seem to be at odds with the conversation that's going on with the other stakeholders involved in the area.
We wouldn't say at odds, but we'd say that there's differences.
I think it's at odds.
So I think that you talk about the initial purchase of the property and the decisions that went on. Early on, when we looked at this property and the Crown Heights West rezoning, my understanding and my takeaway from the department was that these manufacturing blocks were actually, you know, eligible and slated to be considered within the rezoning. But obviously, as was the case with other rezonings, I think back on Community Board Three and Myrtle Avenue and such, I think that many times, the M1 properties were left out of city-sponsored rezonings for the obvious reasons that the environmental work that would need to go in, including the diligence, reporting and such, was simply too much for the city to bite off. And so we went in this with eyes open, and we looked at two things. The first thing we looked at was that the fact was that an R-7A was established on all our portions of 18 blocks to the south and southeast as part of the Crown Heights West rezoning, which kind of gave us a baseline. But we also noted that that was at a time where inclusionary housing was not mandatory. It's an inclusionary housing designated area. The percentage yield of units would be less at 20%. So given that, given the fact that we had a particular block here where, you know, if you're going from a lower-density residential to an R-7A, there's considerations that you're not necessarily faced with when you're starting with an M-1-1, environmental considerations and others which make the use and productive use of the property much more difficult. And so that's what we did. We factored it in. We looked at what was around us. We looked at the fact that, given the fact that inclusionary housing was now something which had been created, mandatory, had been created during the process, that, you know, our bigger building would be required to provide more, a higher percentage of units, which is, you know, you factor that into the development. And so given all of that, that's when we came up to this decision. Had we started this process, you know, in February 2019, I would say it would look much different. We started this on February 19, 2015, was our initial meeting with city planning. It's something that has been the process of a lot of discussion and thought.
I will just clarify that the department has, from the beginning, been recommending for the mid-blocks R-7A, and that going from an M-zone to R-7A will trigger MIH.
Right. And I certainly recognize that it makes sense for you to plan a rezoning all the way to Classen Avenue. But I would have thought it would make more sense to plan R-7A for this site and R-7D along Classen. Nobody is looking at R-7D on a mid-block site like this one as far from an avenue.
Yeah. I would first just acknowledge the chair's comment. This was, we understand the entirety of the discussion to date. But again, and I understand that you have Classen Avenue and you have this property. It is a, you know, it takes into account really localized land use determinations. And, you know, it's rare to have a block like this, where you really have an area with a burgeoning residential population, and you have a block which is over 50% open, vacant, and even those buildings which appear, including within the development area and the project area, are largely one-story commercial. We, you know, we're working with the benefit of working with an architect who has put forth a creative design. We think that this is going to be a productive development, and I get it. I mean, there's competing interests, and this is where we fell out.
And also, just reverting to your conversation with Commissioner Ortiz about the ground-floor, industrial, commercial, whatever it's going to be, I'm reminded that two weeks ago, you were before us with a different client in North Williamsburg arguing for the viability of mixed-use, commercial in that case, with light industrial. So, you know, every neighborhood has its own considerations.
Absolutely.
And we can all make an argument for, I mean, this is a very similar neighborhood in terms of the ground floor and the transitional nature of the land use. So I could imagine, depending on, you know, if your client had a different development scenario here, you're standing here making a strong pitch for light industrial.
I understand. And I think that, I mean, it's important to note that. We do come before the commission with a wide variety of applications in that case. We were looking at a property which was within an M-1-2 area, where we have the benefit of the special permit. I think that, you know, you look at Williamsburg in that area, and you see that these type of, those type of uses are really appropriate. I mean, that's, I can hold my head up high and say that I'm happy to bring a mixed-use, Use Group 6, Use Group 16 project to North 13th Street in Williamsburg. I mean, you walk around that area, and it's a different area, it's a different type of application. So I do think that this is not Williamsburg, obviously. I think that there's different demands, and I think that those two applications can coexist with very little dissonance.
If I could just add the one other difference and what we're hoping to promote, at least as the architect. The client has elected, in close consultation with the local councilwoman, and worked with her, and we've worked with her staff for many years. The Art Center is a point of differentiation. And so one could do, if you will, a conventional R-7A, but once we take into account the other points that council has brought forward, including MIH and the additional housing. But the Art Center is an additional element, and that the councilwoman has been extremely supportive and engaged with us for several years. And we've tried hard to come up with a creative solution incorporating an element of the historic fabric of the neighborhood. No one else is doing that, and we felt electively, and we had to talk our client into the expense of that, that that would be something extraordinary and special, and that would make this application different from others. And we know the commission is always interested and concerned with precedent, but I would argue this is a client and a group that's trying to do something special and extraordinary for an unusual block that could use some help and activation. And that was our goal, and that's what I attempted to do.
Mr. Lebel, how do you react to the recommendation that we, in essence, create a spot donut hole in mid-block by not extending the rezoning out to Classen?
I think that it's clear that the rezoning should be extended to Classen, given the consistency of R-70 C-2.4 with Classen. And I don't think it would make any sense, from a land use and planning standpoint, to isolate the property. I think this is going to create what we've kind of intimated here, which is going to be a, you know, a commercial area along this frontage that will travel from Classen. I don't, I just don't think that the development makes sense without it. And so it's 440 feet. It is not, you know, it is not full-through on the entirety of the block. But this area and this block frontage, we think, is appropriate for the full treatment.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Rampershot.
Yes. I have a question with regards to the cellar floor plan and the parking. I know you have 61 spots shown, but I just want to confirm, is there any kind of conflict with the ramp going down and about two or three spots that you have on A301?
Yes. Let's see if we can pull it up.
So I don't know if you have a conflict when you turn in, if you worked out. I know it's still in the early phases, and nothing's been finalized, but I think you may have.
Let's just see if we can find it. I believe I have another drawing of the parking, so I'll just, yeah. I know there's a version of it here.
Oh, really?
There's sort of a presentation, which perhaps is a little easier to read. So I believe--
Lower right-hand corner, right.
Yes. Oh, so there is a, it's a very good, a technical question, but to answer simply, there is a main ramped area, and then there is what is known as a blended area, which is a very low slope, which is only a few percent. And the lower portion of that is the, what is known as the blending area, which means it's of a very slight slope, perhaps 2% or 3%, so that a car can still pull in on that. So the main portion of the ramp, and I appreciate the commissioner's question, is here, which allows us to get down, which is a 1 and 12 slope. But over here, it's more of a 1 and 20 or 1 and 25 slope, which is known as a blending slope, which permits a car to enter into that space.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant team? Thank you. We'll now turn to speakers in opposition, beginning with Zemir Khan, who will be followed by Gib Vacconi.
Good morning, Chair Lago and members of the commission. My name is Zemir Khan. I'm a doorman at 165 East 72nd Street on the Upper East Side. I've been a member of 32BJ for the past nine years. I'm here on behalf of my union and fellow 32BJ members to express our concerns regarding this rezoning. As you know, New York's economy is hard on working families, and we believe that in order to create a more equitable New York, developers should commit to providing prevailing wage-building service jobs. This is especially true when it comes to projects like the one proposed, a majority-market-rate development in an increasingly expensive community. The rezoning sought by the developer of 1010 Pacific is a potentially lucrative one that would convert manufacturing land to residential use. We believe that the gains of the rezoning should be shared with working families, and that the developer should create good jobs that give workers dignity and security. Unfortunately, the developer seeking the rezoning, an affiliate of EM Equity Holdings, has not made a commitment to pay building service workers prevailing wages. We think working New Yorkers deserve better, and Brooklyn Community District 8 deserves better. As of now, we are concerned about how this rezoning will impact working families. We respectfully request that you urge the developer to commit to good jobs that pay prevailing wages for building service workers as part of your recommendation for this project. Thank you for having us this morning, and have a good day.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Khan. Our next speaker is Gib Vacconi, who will be followed by Peter Crassus.
Good morning. My name is Gib Vacconi, and since 2013, I've been part of the Community Board 8 team that has been working on the M-CROWN initiative in the M-1-1 zone. I know you've all been briefed on the community board's recommendations with respect to 1010 Pacific. I'm going to provide a little bit of background on the M-CROWN project. In the summer of 2014, Brooklyn Community Board 8 began a dialogue with the Department of City Planning regarding the rezoning of an area of Western Crown Heights currently zoned M-1-1. During meetings in June and July of that year, Brooklyn Director Von Engel told members of our subcommittee that his office was prepared to work to commit resources on the effort, and that then-chair Weiss-Broadd saw it as an opportunity to explore new zoning tools. After extensive financial modeling, data gathering, and analysis in April 2015, CB8 voted to request DCP study the rezoning area for mixed residential and light industrial use, with the thought that market-rate residential would be able to cross-subsidize affordable housing and manufacturing uses, and that the allowable manufacturing uses could be tailored to maximize the potential for living wage jobs. It has been nearly five years since DCP agreed to work with Community Board 8 on a rezoning of the M-CROWN district. And we're here today, in part, because the length of the process has precipitated private rezoning applications that risk undermining the community's goals for the larger area. The cure for that problem is timely action on the Department of City Planning with respect to CB8's rezoning request. At the Monday Review, Commissioner Ortiz questioned the viability of retail in the 1010 Pacific application. CB8, in fact, has asked retail not be permitted alongside streets in the M-CROWN district, and instead to promote retail use on Classen Avenue, Grand Avenue, and Washington Avenue. CB8 has, however, proposed that non-residential, non-retail use be required on the first floor alongside streets in order to preserve and extend job-creating uses. CB8 has not, as the chair stated on Monday, proposed, quote, "mandating industrial uses in all areas." CB8 has proposed only that a modest .25 FAR be required for light industrial and artisan uses alongside streets in the M-CROWN district. CB8 has provided the commissioners with an overview of the M-CROWN vision as applied to the framework presented a year ago by the Department of City Planning. It includes a financial analysis that indicates development of currently vacant lots on side streets in the M-CROWN district for mixed residential use at 3.6 FAR and light industrial and non-residential use at 1.4 FAR is feasible. Sorry, I garbled that a little bit, but our analysis is based on, our analysis is based on 3.6 FAR residential, 1.4 FAR non-residential. The Department of City Planning has told us that requiring non-residential development would be so burdensome to developers that doing so would risk leaving the district with little new development. On the other hand, DCP has also told us--
Thank you, Mr. Vacconi.
Thank you.
You'll get questions from the commission. Yes, Commissioner Capelli.
What has DCP, what have they told you?
In addition to that, they've explained that if we instead go for an option for non-residential development with a 1 FAR bonus, all of the developers would take it because residential use on the first floor is not desirable. To us, we can't really square those two statements. We think that the requirement would create no development, but the option would create development, doesn't, they can't both be true at the same time.
Commissioner Deloos.
Gib, good to see you. First, I just want to say, you know, thank you to Community Board 8 for providing this. I think it's helped-- I think it's helpful to see the side-by-side comparison of what the community has been asking for and, you know, compared to the two projects that are before us. So I guess, you know, my question specific to 1010 Pacific Street, I mean, you know, obviously, the applicant team laid out a rationale for an increase in, you know, residential FAR, you know, significantly more beyond what the community board has outlined. And we do know that there is demand, obviously, for that residential development. What, you know, can you provide a little bit more background behind the community board's rationale for a lower FAR on the residential side? I think, you know, I certainly understand the desire to require or incentivize, depending on your perspective, the non-residential uses, and in particular, the light industrial uses, but could you talk a little bit about how is it that the community board landed on a 3.6 FAR for residential versus a greater number?
Well, as was mentioned by Mr. Lobel, there have been discussions that have been evolving over the course of the last five years for this part of the district. The original Community Board 8 proposal was for a total of 5.6 FAR, at which point the community board was looking to require 1.5 FAR for non-residential, which would have included both the first floor and the second floor for non-residential use. This vision was not supported by the Department of City Planning. The view instead was that, there were a number of objections raised. One of them was that requiring non-residential on the second floor would just be too burdensome with the need for two building cores. And then with respect to side streets, there was a feeling expressed to us that the 5.7 FAR, the 5.6 FAR, was just too dense for the side streets. So a year ago, the city planning presented to us a framework, which we included in your packet, that called for a lower density on the side streets. In the meantime, the community board had also stepped back from a requirement of having non-residential use beyond the first floor in order to address the objection about two cores in the building. So I would say that where we are now is a product of both where the community board started and a response to some of the objections that were raised by the Department of City Planning. The concern we have about 1010 being rezoned for R7D is that it's out of scale with the current discussions with city planning for the larger area, and approving 5.7, I mean, R7D would create an expectation among other stakeholders in the zone of similar treatment, and it would also probably trigger additional speculation in the market, which would make the type of development that's favored by the community less viable. Does that make sense?
Other questions? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, I'm not quite sure how to ask this. I mean, you mentioned a few things. You know, you mentioned that, you know, you're not interested in retail mid-block. You are interested in, you know, manufacturing, light manufacturing mid-block, recognizing we don't often control market forces. We may want things and we sometimes don't get them. You know, in this, and then you also said, you know, ground-floor residential is not, you know, the, I'm not sure the term you used, but--
Not as desirable.
Not as desirable.
By the way, I was paraphrasing an argument that we got from DCP. It's not, it's not the community board's point of view.
Okay. Okay, well, that's actually helpful because, you know, one of the, you know, I always, whenever that comes up, I always bristle because we obviously live in a city where we have wonderful residential neighborhoods, wonderful residential streets, Brooklyn being chief among them. And so I was just curious sort of where that came from, so that's--
Well, I want to address the idea that we don't control market forces. I think that that is only partially true. Certainly, MIH is an attempt to control market forces. If otherwise, we wouldn't have a program that mandates the creation of affordable housing. We're not looking for full lot coverage for light industrial uses. Our requirement, proposed requirement is fairly modest. We're talking about .25 FAR on the first floor with the rest of the first floor coverage available for non-retail, non-residential. So community facilities like doctors' offices, artisan uses like, you know, everything from ceramics, textiles, woodworking, all possible, other kinds of commercial office tenants also possible. So we're looking for a substantial, we're offering a substantial amount of flexibility relative to other similar types of zones that have been approved in the city of New York.
I mean, I will say there's a big difference between the endless demand for affordable housing and demand for certain kinds of commercial spaces. Those are two different animals. So I'm not sure that's a, you know, apples-to-apples comparison, but I get your point. Thank you.
Other questions? I want, oh, yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I'm curious to know a little more about Community Board 8's attitude toward the arts facility that is apparently planned by the developer for this project. Are those discussions that we, the applicant team referred to discussions with the council member, has the community board been involved in those discussions? And is an art center something you'd like to see here?
The community board has not been involved in discussions about the art center. The idea of having an art center there would be consistent with that .25 of FAR that we would like to see devoted to artisan and light industrial uses. But in and of itself, as you see from the material, the comparison that we provided, it's smaller than what the community board is requesting is what our current discussion, or our current discussions with DCP are right now.
Other questions? I want to thank you in particular, Mr. Vacconi, for your service on the community board. We know that it is volunteer time, and in addition to the normal work of the community board, the fact that CB8 has been so engaged in the planning process and that you took the time during the day to come here speaks volumes, so thank you.
I appreciate that. If I may, I would like to point out that I believe CB8 is doing something that's unusual for a community board in Brooklyn today. We're asking for residential upzoning at a time when there's usually a lot of local opposition to residential upzonings, and I believe that CB8's reasonable request for light industrial use could help send a message that would encourage other communities to do the same thing and partner with the Department of City Planning and the administration to help achieve the goals of its housing program. I think that dismissing that request might have the opposite effect, and so I would really encourage the commission to seriously consider the community's stated intentions for the district. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much for your time and input. Our next speaker will be Peter Crassus, who will be followed by Armando Moritz Chapele Quen.
Hi, thank you very much. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm speaking as a community member. I've run across a couple of you one time or another. I, I'm speaking in support of the Community Board 8's position relative to 1010 and 1050 Pacific Street, but I'm also speaking with deep reservations or concerns about the component of the proposal, which, because this is a larger M-Crown framework that relates to west of Grand Avenue. Because 1010, so the expansion of M-Crown into Prospect Heights on Atlantic Avenue and a new potential historic district on Eastern Parkway was approved at the same general meeting of Community Board 8 in October 2018. Both initiatives are tied to the same leadership. Our, I'm surely not alone in thinking, our city isn't planning for its future in a way that successfully builds thriving new areas of residential and commercial development. Instead, because of the apparent dynamic of political access, too high a value seems to be placed on protecting the perceived quality of life of some of the affluent, low-density areas of Brooklyn. This is a prescription for increasing economic disparity and environmental injustice within and among neighborhoods. After what apparently has been a five-year process, we've just learned, and just to be clear, you know, the eastern part of, the western part of the M-Crown proposal was added in roughly two years ago with very little community awareness in Prospect Heights. We've just learned for the first time that last Thursday, the area of Atlantic Avenue and Prospect Heights may be zoned around R8A, very significant density, and will also have some seat overlay. In addition, one area essentially a lot. At the intersection of Vanderbilt and Atlantic is differentiated and may be larger. So far, we have received no clarification what the specifics of this potential building will be. I believe there are two factors that resulted in M-Crown's highest degree of density being largely placed in the northern part of Prospect Heights. The first is that it is an area that has by and large been disenfranchised within this process. The second is the unrealistic expectation, or sometimes unrealistic expectation of property investors. Our immediate area of northern Prospect Heights simply should not be asked to accept this additional level of density. Much of our area was originally zoned M1 or commercial as a result of already-approved development, including an area, Atlantic Yards Pacific Park, anticipated at project completion to be the most complete, to be the most dense census tract in the United States when it was approved. We anticipate shortfalls in elementary school seats and open space. Even with delays in already-approved development, the streets of northern Prospect Heights are already clogged at certain times. We should not be asked to accommodate more at this time. As it details the potential future zoning in our area--
Thank you, Mr. Crassus. And I know you indicated that you were testifying in your individual capacity, but I will nonetheless thank you for your service on the community board as well. And now toss it open for questions. Commissioner Deloos.
Hi, Peter, thanks for being here. I'm wondering, so can you speak a little bit more to exactly which portion was added in terms of the western portion of the M-Crown and any background that you can share about that evolution?
I can speak to what I know. So the, and I understand, from what I've been told, that area was added about roughly two years ago. That is probably, if you know the area of, that specific zone might actually have been, because it's closest to downtown Brooklyn, be perceived as being the area that a real estate investor might put his money into first. So in some respects, I was kind of surprised that the generation of the M-Crown didn't come in part from that expectation and set guidelines for the community in relation to that zone, because it does differ. You know, west of Washington Avenue is a different community education district with serious anticipated shortfalls in elementary school seats. Atlantic Yards alone will produce 1,866 elementary school students who we don't have any location for because virtually the schools nearby are virtually, have been for a while, over capacity and will in the, be, in no time be again over capacity, significantly over capacity. We have, you know, when you have M1 zones being, I'm sure there's something in front of you at all times, you have M1 zones that don't have the existing infrastructure of schools or parks that existing neighborhoods do. And so, and this is not, because I think there's this expectation that, that planning will be based upon transit and transit availability. In some respects, there's a misapprehension of the quality of transit availability on Atlantic Avenue, and I think that, especially with a delay in Atlantic Yards. So you have, you know, we're seeing a high level of density placed in a spot which actually, even in looking at the Community Board 8 district alone, has superior transit in other areas where the density is not going to be increased. We have a historic district being proposed for Eastern Parkway, which has transit right on the, on the Eastern Parkway itself, and the proposal is specifically to constrain as-of-right approved development. Whereas, you know, in Nostran Avenue, if you look at the, if you look at maps, you'll see Nostran Avenue has, and Atlantic has much better transit than Atlantic and Vanderbilt.
I think you're raising a very good point as it relates to that. But in particular, though, it was, I think, this west of Claussen that was added later, is that--
Grand, I think.
Grand, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
And the, just to, because I go back to your original question, the, I became aware, and I'm, as you're pretty familiar, I'm a rough track what happens in Prospect Heights. I became aware that this sector was part of the M-Crown proposal in the spring last year. The Prospect Heights community has had virtually no notice of Atlantic Avenue being modified and its zoning being addressed. Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Armando Moritz Chapele Quen, who will be followed by Paula Crespo.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to testify. My name is Armando Moritz Chapele Quen. I am the Senior Economic Development Organizer with the Association for Neighborhood and Housing Development, or ANHD. I'm here today representing both ANHD and the Industrial Jobs Coalition, citywide alliance of policy advocates, community organizations, and business service providers from across the city. ANHD and the Industrial Jobs Coalition oppose the proposed spot rezonings of 1010 as well as 1050. I'm submitting all the testimony as one, and I have copies. While our advocacy has typically opposed, has typically focused on citywide projects such as the self-storage and hotel text amendments, these proposals, similar to the North Brooklyn Plan and 25 Kent Avenue from a few years ago, have impacts for both local and citywide industrial land use policy. The unanimous opposition of the local community board, Brooklyn Community Board 8, should be enough to give us pause. CB8, as we've already heard, has been working with the Department of City Planning for many years to enact a broader neighborhood-wide rezoning, the M-Crown. However, while that approach has been talked about and been debated back and forth for many years, it hasn't moved at all. The proposed rezonings of 1010 as well as 1050 are located within the proposed M-Crown district. These proposed developments, moving forward while a district-wide proposal stalls, undermine the goals of the M-Crown district and set a local precedent for other developers to follow suit. Rather than advance spot rezonings in the district, the City Planning Commission should bring the proposed developments of 1010 and 1050 into compliance with the M-Crown district, the proposed district. A patchwork approach to outdated zoning, industrial zoning, is not the solution, and I would just defer to submitted documents from Brooklyn CB8 in terms of the specific recommendations. Broadly, though, looking at the broader impacts, in pursuing a viable mixed-use strategy that creates space for light manufacturing, it is crucial to consider how the use groups in manufacturing zone portions of the building are defined. In the absence of a citywide action to redefine the overly broad use groups in M-zoning, the community-led effort behind the M-Crown attempts to tackle this challenge. The current applications, on the other hand, which make reference simply to non-residential uses, do not ensure that any manufacturing uses will occupy the final development. As manufacturing zone land has gradually been lost, the amount of space for manufacturing uses in our city has dwindled. Innovative proposals that address this shortage and aim to bring new manufacturing space should be allowed to move forward rather than be disregarded by private developments that undermine the goals laid out by the community. We support CB8's effort to bring affordable housing and affordable industrial space to their neighborhood. The M-Crown represents the best opportunity for the comprehensive approach that this, to meet this critical need, and we urge the City Planning Commission to amend the proposals to be in compliance with the goals laid out by the M-Crown. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions? Commissioner Deloos.
Armando, I would just say that you got a lot in in a very short period of time.
I had to trim some down, too. I'll submit written copies.
It was a tour de force.
Yeah. The one thing I would just maybe ask briefly for you to comment on, because I think there are very few advocacy groups that are both in the position to comment on the need for affordable housing and the need for good jobs.
Right.
And, you know, obviously, we heard from the developer, as part of their justification for the R7D was the residential demand, which, of course, we know is there.
Totally.
I mean, would you, would you add anything else briefly to say, how is it that ANHD views having to balance these two things?
Well, one of the, one of the original reasons why our Industrial Jobs Coalition came together many years ago was our members basically recognizing that no housing is affordable without a good-paying job. And so one of the reasons why we specifically focused on industrial manufacturing as one of those crucial sectors is because, I mean, the numbers have shown that historically, the industrial manufacturing sector provides good-paying jobs with very low barriers to entry. So if we're really going to be serious about affordability, there is one component of this, which is building the affordable housing and making sure the housing is affordable enough, but also making sure that we have good-paying jobs for people in the city to make sure that they can afford the housing that is being built.
Commissioner Levin.
You also bring the unique perspective of having thought about industrial mixed-use developments in other areas of the city, and so I wonder if you can give us some context between the mechanisms that are now at work in North Williamsburg. We've now seen three applications for, that, for the special permit to allow, use light industrial, new light industrial space as an incentive for other forms of development. In that case, it's commercial development. But we've had the same conversation--
Right.
--about the importance of maintaining opportunities for new light industrial spaces. It strikes me in the three applications that we've seen so far that it's an altogether different kind of light industrial that people are talking about.
Yeah.
How, what kind of light industrial do you imagine might actually happen here? Is this, is it correct for us to be thinking about this neighborhood in kind of a similar fashion to North Williamsburg? Because it is new development after all. It's not old--
Right.
--gritty, cheap, industrial space. This is-- This is new space with kind of new tech jobs.
Right.
Is that likely to happen here? And how does that then fulfill the community's desire?
So...
And your desire, appropriate desire for good jobs?
Yeah, I'm just taking down some notes because there are a number of points that I want to address in terms of your questions. So, I might not necessarily be above saying, I told you guys so. When we were here for 25 Kent, we had said this is going to set a local precedent for other developers to follow suit. And here we are.
Exactly.
What, in that same vein, one of the main concerns that we had had at the time was how the light industrial portion of the building was defined. And what we saw with the 25 Kent application was a very, very rigorous attempt at defining multiple different portions of a single building, which I think it's great. We need to overhaul use groups. It's something that the Industrial Jobs Coalition has been talking about for a while. But the progress shouldn't be made on a building-by-building basis. There should just be the acknowledgement, this project that is going forward will set a precedent in other places. We need to really think about it beyond just North Williamsburg. And I think that this also gets to the other issue of this, which is that more broadly in the M-zones, it is very difficult, because manufacturing is changing, to define, these are the specific manufacturing and industrial uses we want in this neighborhood or in an M-zone. Because the technology is changing, I think the easier approach has been to look at the existing zoning and saying, rather than create a list that is, this is manufacturing, we can look at the existing list and say, these things are not manufacturing. I think the city collectively has gone through that process. When we look at the self-storage text amendment, we look at the hotel text amendment, hotels and self-storage are not manufacturing. Like, that seems pretty straightforward and simple. I think that that's been the similar thinking when we look at the North Brooklyn study, where we look at nightclubs or large-scale entertainment uses. Those are not manufacturing uses. You could make a similar case around non-ancillary office uses. And so, I hesitate to answer the question of like specifically what uses I would envision seeing in this building, because I think that, for one, it's going to be largely up to what makes the most sense in the local community. But then also, where's the technology by the time the building is actually built? There, I mean, we've seen a lot of technological innovations in terms of different things that, I mean, there are things that are being manufactured right now that did not exist when the zoning was last rigorously written on manufacturing in the 1960s. And so, allowing for some of that flexibility is something that I'm willing to do. But I think that there is, this touches on a number of different issues, which is why we wanted to come here, specifically looking at what happened with 25 Kent, looking at what it actually means to have real mixed-use development, actually going towards light industrial space, but also being very deliberate and not just saying, well, we have an M-zone portion of a building, and so therefore we can call it a day because we created new manufacturing space. We have to actually look at the end uses. And if those end uses aren't being produced, given the zoning models that we've put together, then we need to come up with new models. And I think that the M-crown presents a good opportunity to do that more broadly.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Crespo, who will be followed by Faye Anne Batton.
Good morning. For a few more minutes, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to testify. I'm Paula Crespo. I'm a planner at the Pratt Center for Community Development. And we have strong concerns about the private rezoning applications for both 1010 and 1050 Pacific Street. They are not responsive to community priorities, and they are premature, given the city's current efforts to develop new industrial land use policy, a lot of which Armando was just referring to. So, for the last five-plus years, Brooklyn Community Board Eight's Land Use Committee has been diligently working on a proposal to create a balanced mixed-use industrial and housing zoning district for six blocks that are currently zoned M11. These two rezoning applications are located in this area, and they really fly in the face of this community-crafted vision for fostering genuine mixed-use development. The owners of 1010 Pacific are seeking a zoning designation that does not allow for any industrial uses, while the owners of 1050 Pacific are applying for the misleadingly-named mixed-use designation known as MX. However, while MX allows for light industrial, it does not actually require or even incentivize any light industrial. So, thanks to the dynamics of real estate economics, these types of zones have a strong tendency to result in commercial and residential development that is devoid of any industrial uses. On a broader level, these rezoning applications and much of DCP's draft framework for rezoning the six-block area are completely inconsistent with other DCP policy formulations, including the recently released North Brooklyn Industry and Innovation Plan and what happened at 25 Kent. So, the North Brooklyn Plan, whose original intent was to create mixed-use zoning templates for North Brooklyn that could be applied to other parts of the city, includes FAR incentives to encourage the creation of industrial space. The special permit that was granted for 25 Kent in Williamsburg also includes similar incentives. In conclusion, the landowners are asking for the right to develop much more than they are currently allowed. And not only are they not being required to set aside space for industrial uses, but the new zoning they're seeking doesn't even incentivize the creation of industrial space. This contradicts the community's vision for promoting development that allows landowners to reap the financial benefits of building new housing while also creating space for industrial businesses and the jobs they provide to city residents.
Thank you. Commissioner Deloos.
Paula, thanks for being here. Obviously, I know that Pratt Center has done a lot of research about the demand for manufacturing space. So, I'm wondering, obviously, you know, the development team said that more traditional light manufacturing, they didn't believe it would work at this location. I'm wondering if there's any information that the Pratt Center has about demand that could be shared with us. We'd appreciate that.
Okay, I'm going to take that question back. I'm not sure if we have anything more than a lot of anecdotal evidence, but I'll talk to our director about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Levin.
And as perhaps context for that, I'd be curious to know what information you have about the demand as it may be emerging for 25 Kent. The building is up, but as I understand it, has no tenants. And we've had, as you know, two more applications, similarly speculative. So, any concrete information you have about what's going on in North Williamsburg for this kind of space would be helpful. Okay. I realize it's beyond the scope of this particular application.
Yeah.
But same land use dynamic.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Crespo.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Faye Anne Batton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Faye Anne Batton from Shell Mobile PC. I'm representing the applicant. I know that you heard from the applicant team earlier and from the community board. I just wanted to summarize some of our points and respond to these recent comments raised by the community board and reiterate some of the points that were also made at the review session yesterday. I note that the application has been discussed, that it's been, it's been going on at DCP since 2015, and it tries to strike a balance between numerous interests. It's clear that the M-crown study area is trying to fix a problem, to address an underutilized and vacant land in zoning districts that only permit a 1.0 FAR as-of-right and a 2.4 community facility. The proposed project area is located right in the middle of this M1 group, where you see unimproved lots, vacant lots, rundown lots, parking lots, and non-conforming residential lots where buildings are occupied and some that are completely boarded up. The proposed rezoning understands the concerns for the stakeholders and job creation, retention, and retaining some commercial uses, and provides housing in furtherance of the demand and the city's goals to provide affordable housing. To address this, the applicant's proposal has remained unchanged, as mentioned before, and I know this was discussed, but it provides a mandated non-residential ground floor use by the C24 overlay. The current M-crown proposals, and I know there was a copy of the proposed text, and I think their November, their meeting, November meeting mandates a certain percentage of these limited M-crown uses. And it excludes many uses that you may see in a more mixed-use development with residential on top. Some of these mandatory non-residential use regulations are from use groups seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 14, 16, and 17. And some, as we know, are not compatible by definition in the zoning resolution with residential uses. So, it provides a lot of restrictions and, you know, we want to create development, and we want to create jobs, and we want to create housing and provide for this local business and spur local development. And we think that the current zoning provides no incentive for this new, for new development and the current zoning, the M1. And the adjoining neighborhoods are experiencing strong demand for residential and commercial development and a need for affordable housing and jobs. Mandates and restrictions on these ground floor uses, sorry, have a strong possibility of causing vacant storefronts. And instead of these limiting uses, we should, it should be balanced, and we believe that this proposal will do such, will do that. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have any other speakers signed up on this topic, but if anyone present would want to be heard, now would be the time. The public hearing is closed.
Power of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 40 and 41. Calendar number 40, CD8, C160175ZMK. Calendar number 41, N160176ZRK. Public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1050 Pacific Street rezoning.
We will have a 10-minute presentation by the applicant team comprised of Richard Lobel and Paul Jensen.
I can say good afternoon, Commissioners, so the presentation will be a little different. Richard Lobel of Shell Mobile PC. I'm joined by Paul Jensen. And we're here to discuss the 1050 Pacific Street rezoning. So, this rezoning obviously encompasses a block to the east of Claussen between Pacific and Dean Streets. As you can see from the rezoning area, the current zoning designation is similarly M11. This is similarly a parcel and development area and project area, which is included within the M11, the M1 Crown zoning study area. I would reiterate again, of course, that in 2013, pursuant to the Crown Heights West rezoning, many of the blocks, as you can see, directly to the south of the parcel, were rezoned to R7A with inclusionary housing. The proposed zoning district for this development site and project site would be an MX20. This would be an R7A paired with an M14 district. To note differences from prior applications, the R7A would permit a 4.6 FAR. The M14 here would permit but not mandate ground floor commercial uses and would also, of course, allow for more active light manufacturing uses within a building. You see, highlighted in red is the development site. That is a through lot fronting both on Dean and Pacific Streets. It has roughly 23,000 square feet of lot area and is currently used for open parking. So, you can see from the land use map here, we have a little bit of a different situation in that, you know, the, first, the zoning district boundary extends roughly 220 feet east of Claussen. So, the, we expect that there would be commercial frontage that would lead up through Claussen Avenue. This is not one that goes to the entirety of the mid-block, instead encompassing 12 or portions of 12 lots along Pacific and Dean, leading back from Claussen. And we also note that there is a, while the properties to the east are manufacturing and commercial, the properties included within the project area are, include zero, you know, so unbuilt vacant lots, one-story commercial buildings and such. And you can see here that the proposal would include two aspects, of course, the first being zoning the mixed-use district along this 225-foot portion, the second being the imposition of a mandatory inclusionary housing area. We note that for purposes of the development, the, while both options would be mapped, the applicant has chosen, after consultation with Councilmember Combo, option two. So, we have pictures here which demonstrate some of the buildings included within the development site and around. We note again that when you take a look at the development site itself, you see that this is an undeveloped portion of the block, and we similarly think that the proposal here will stimulate development, both on the portion that is being rezoned as well as in the additional parcels included within the rezoning area. So, to briefly kind of go into the development itself and the proposed building, we first note that we've got a massing diagram. This is fairly innovative and well-received design with regards to discussions with both the community who can speak to this themselves, but also with the council member. There are two eight-story portions, which set back each at the sixth story, as they are connected by a one-story portion in the center. We note also that just from this diagram, we demonstrate the existing context of the area, including 1,000 Dean Street at eight stories and other buildings between four and 10 stories. So, we felt the R7A here was appropriate. And to look at the sectional site plan, you can see that there are essentially three parts. The first is the ground floor, which indicates that the ground floor will be fully occupied with the exception of this area in the center, which we'll discuss later. So, you can see that in Section A and Section B, those are the portions with residential above the first story. On the first story, it is intended that there will be accessory residential to reach the residential portions, as well as commercial portions. They are connected by Section C, which is a one-story commercial, for want of a better term, passageway, which allows for retail to be located and contiguous, provides a contiguous retail through both the frontages on Dean Street and Pacific Street. Also, it's exciting to note that in the center area here, the, and if I can just show on the map, this, this area right here is a, an open area. We'll take a look at some of the diagrams and massings, but this provides for a roughly 5,000-square-foot space outdoors to be utilized both by building residents, building tenants, people visiting the commercial portion, as well as community residents in general. So, this is designed to be a very valuable amenity to the local area. And here we have, in more elaborate form, the proposed ground floor plan. We note, in anticipation of questions, we note that the commercial frontages here, as well as the, within the corridor, contain smaller commercial spaces. This was by the design of the applicant. This is an applicant who has owned the property since or around 2002, so they have owned the property for, you know, upwards of 17 to 18 years. And so, they felt, after discussions with local retail owners, that smaller commercial would be benefited from these types of smaller spaces. So, the spaces range in size, but generally you can see that they're smaller, maybe between 1,000 to 2,000 square feet each, providing for a rough total of roughly 15,000 ground floor commercial use. And again, you can see the rough layout in the center of the building. This is the open area in the middle. It is amenities. There are trees, there are benches. We look forward to this being a great place, as community residents talked about taking a cup of coffee, sitting down. It's, you know, we think it's just a wonderful design. And in section, what to note. So, first, we note that the cellar here contains parking spaces. There is actually more than ample parking spaces. We're providing greater-than-required spaces, while the 60-plus parking spaces would be sufficient for residential at market rate. The truth is that, given the affordable nature of 30% of the units, we're actually providing an overage here. So, we're basically providing the parking blind to the, to the status of those units. We also note that there is an overage of roughly 50 bicycle parking spaces. We have no issues here with regards to parking. And you can see the commercial ground floor, of course, while on the section, it appears that the commercial ground floor between the buildings occupies the entire space. This is really more of a roughly 27 to 29 hundred-square-foot portion of the lot. And then the residential above with units extending to the eighth story. Really briefly going through the remainder of the plans, we would note that there's a general massing of the building that we offered two facades. The council member actually actively engaged us and challenged us with regards to the facade. And, you know, without revealing too much, had many nice things to say about this facade with the almost cast iron-looking elements, as well as the fenestration, giving rise to somewhat of a manufacturing-type feel for this building. It's basically, we view it to be an innovative design, and it's something that we're excited to be involved with. I would also note just briefly with regards to the layout of the residential units, the property is somewhat unique in providing for, and again, probably too small to be seen on this chart, but the entirety of the property is populated with two-bedroom units. We found this to be a benefit both to the surrounding area. This was something which was cited in many of the meetings as being desirable. It's, you know, one of the nice things, I think, about these two family units is that, two-bedroom units, is that you've got a situation where with the natural mix of units within the building between affordability and market rate, you basically have a seamless view of neighbors, next to neighbors, without any real... have, have a seamless view of neighbors, next to neighbors, without any real distinguishing characteristics between those units. So we just feel that the, this is a well-thought-out proposal. We're happy to be involved with this, and again, happy to answer any of the commission's questions.
Questions? Commissioner Deloos.
Hi.
Hi.
So it's interesting that you say, I'm going to, you know, obviously focus on the MIH option. Obviously, both the community board and the borough president recommended option one, which is certainly more consistent with the local community board median income, where about 60% of the folks in community board eight are at or below 60% of area median income, so a much higher percentage even than an earlier comment I made for another application.
Sure.
And, and then, obviously, the community board, right now, the proposal doesn't include any ground floor light industrial uses, but, you know, there's obviously the possibility of that, so I'm wondering if you could speak to the community board's recommendations to include those uses?
I would address both points in turn. The, you know, we can, we include a statement within all of our written materials that we expect that the option for mandatory inclusionary will be upon consultation with the council member, and that's the case here. We've basically been very clear with the council member from early on that option two was what was utilized in projecting the requirements to make this building work. And so when we, we understand that, obviously, different developments have different, different amenities which are provided. What we have here is a building where we've got a ground floor where there is no mandated commercial use. So, and we know that, again, from discussions with the community board, who can have their own comments, that, that we, it's something which would be desirable. So in this building with over 15,000 square feet of ground floor commercial use, with this wonderful amenity of a central courtyard available to the community at large, and, importantly, with residential units, which we feel at two bedrooms, offer on average a more generous floor plan and living space than many other developments, that's, that was, those were the decisions and what went into the mix with regards to this development. So further in consultation with the council member, we got it. I mean, we understand the, the issues involved with option one and option two, and we understand the pressures with regards to providing option one. We have done developments which have included workforce housing as part of the mix, and so we know that there is a range, and we feel that, you know, while there are many developments which will come in and say that they would choose option one, that you want to make sure that you do have the range of options available, that, you know, you will still qualify for mandatory inclusionary housing treatment, and that was why option two was chosen here. It was chosen in a very serious way and one in which the development team looked at the, the numbers for this building, for, you know, for making it work with this building and with these amenities, and this is what was determined. With regards to the commercial square footage, Commissioner Deloos, we understand the comments with regards to light manufacturing, and it is our understanding among the development team that we would devote a, a percentage of these commercial uses to probably what would amount to, I think the term is artisan type of manufacturing uses. Again, the applicant here has had a long time over the last 17-plus years to really get a feel for the local community, for what's been successful and what hasn't. And so internally, there's been that discussion, and so, you know, obviously, from the stated vote of the community board, we understand that this comes closer to what they wanted to see than other proposals, so we're really happy where we ended up.
Yes.
So it, so it sounds like you're open to artisanal uses, which some people would call maker uses, and some people would call light industrial uses, depending on where you stand. So is that, is that something that you all are discussing more formally with the community board as an agreement for the process?
It's not. You know, they, they've made clear in their resolutions that they want a certain percentage devoted to light manufacturing uses. I expect that we will solidify what those uses might be or entail going forward. You know, many times, we look to the Department of Buildings and guidance with regards to the nature of use groups, the nature of accessory space and all, and so we, these will be, you know, these will be legitimate in light manufacturing uses. We have not been able, with any specificity, to define the exact users, but, again, the development team with experience in this area is confident that they'll be able to populate the, the space with those.
And if I might, are you guys planning to apply for 421A?
Yes.
Okay, well, again, you might want to look at that option.
Sure, we understand.
And then, finally, you know, especially for someone who's owned the building since 2002, I think the numbers can, are often more likely to work in the, in favor of option one, if you've owned the property for that long.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and just to be clear, the, the building, there's, you know, it's really a vacant lot, so there's, they really haven't had a, a building on the site.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I guess I have to ask, is there any relationship between the development team, the applicant team, on this project and 1010 Pacific?
Just their zoning council.
Okay. Just, you get to tell the same story twice, which actually leads to my question. I'm wondering, I mean, you've alluded to this a little bit in your discussion about the, your client's plans for the ground floor commercial space and the possibility that it could be, could shade over into the industrial side of things. I mean, obviously, this client has a different attitude about ground floor uses that could be successful here than the previous application. Am I wrong in drawing that conclusion?
Without, you know, cross-pollinating, so to speak.
Yeah, and I don't want, I don't want to put you in a position of having to speak against your other client, but, but I think we have a different vision here for ground. Am I correct in understanding that we have a different vision here?
I would say, I would say strictly from a factual standpoint and from a land use standpoint, we do. I think that you have a different situation with regards to the longstanding nature of the lot being a vacant lot, as opposed to one where more active manufacturing-type uses were engaged in. You've got a situation here where you are really amounts to be 100 or so feet from Classen Avenue, which, you know, can be seen as being very supportive of a commercial ground floor environment. You know, again, the community board's going to speak to this, but we, we hear things and we see things, and the idea of people being able to go in here, engage the local retail, because that's what this was made for, and local retail and local, local commercial, to expand that, and also, and just to congregate here, it's pretty cool. I mean, it's like a really, I just think it's, you know, really evidences a lot of thought on behalf of the development.
Okay. Is your, is your client a long-term owner here?
They are.
I mean, but going, looking into the future, do they intend to develop and operate this building?
They do. And, and, and just, again, I would be remiss if I did not point out that, looking back on the documents, they have been, in this process, the, the documents were dated earlier than the prior application, and they've been around since June 2014, I believe, was the date of our first meeting. So they're not only long-term holders, but also will, you know, intend to be long-term holders, and, and again, we just, we think it's a really neat development.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'll pose the same question about the recommendation that the adjusted development site be rezoned, and how you view that from a land use rationale?
Yeah, I, I think that there's, there's no land use rationale to not rezone the entirety of the proposed project area. You have, you know, really here, you're within 200 feet to 225 feet of Classen. You've got a through lot here, which particularly on this site benefits both Pacific and Dean Streets. Both of those streets are, by the way, narrow, wide streets, sorry, wide, narrow streets at 70 feet each. You know, we look forward to the entirety of this frontage being a very kind of exciting area, which we, which we, which we view would be spurred to, you know, a very nice local thoroughfare. So again, I, I don't see it as, as basically just, you know, reducing the size of the rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks to the applicant team, and we will now turn to speakers in opposition, starting with Peter Crassus, who will be followed by Paula Crespo.
Both of them have left.
Okay. Yep, yep. And then our next speaker will be Hannah Bernbaum, followed by Vinnie Stellato. Is Hannah, has Hannah Bernbaum left?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Then Mr. Stellato.
Good afternoon. My name is Vinnie Stellato. I'm a member at 32BJ and have been a member for numerous years. I'm here today on behalf of my union to share our perspective on the development of 1050 Pacific. As you have heard, 32BJ believes that a key element to creating a more equitable and sustainable New York economy for working families are good property service jobs that pay families sustaining wages and give workers access to mobility and security. The potential jobs created by this project will be filled by local members of the community and should help uplift working families. We have reached out to the developers of 1050 Pacific in hopes that they will commit to good building service jobs that pay prevailing wages. We have been in production, in productive conversation with them, and will keep the commission and community updated on our discussions. Additionally, I would like to add that, for the record, we did sign up in opposition for this project, but we are in fact neutral. We respectfully request that you urge, and I emphasize urge, the developer to commit to prevailing wages, to prevailing wage property service jobs as part of your recommendation for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
If there are any questions, my coworkers from the union will follow up. Thank you very much.
We'll now turn to speakers in support, beginning with Jim Ficconi, who will be followed by Faye Anne Batton.
Hello again. Since you've already heard the community board's recommendations, I'm going to use this time just to clarify a couple of things. The first is, the community board did in fact vote in support of this project with conditions that included allocating a portion of the ground floor to light industrial uses and, and changing the MIH option from option two to option one. At the here, at the meeting in which that vote was taken, the applicant agreed to those stipulations. It appears that the applicant is no longer willing to elect MIH option one, although obviously, there's some further discussion to be had there. With respect to the light industrial uses, the M-Crown project has produced copious documentation on what's considered light industrial uses, and so I would refer the applicant's counsel to that, to that documentation. It's quite, it's quite specific. I would like to address this idea of the restricting the scope of these two zonings. I certainly understand the argument that from the perspective of a ULP application, extending these zoning areas is necessary for a rational rezoning. The community board's opposition to that is not based on general principles of rational rezoning. It's based on the idea that there is a specific intent to rezone this, this part of Brooklyn, and having private applications take other lots down in their path and take them out of contention for that rezoning is, is potentially detrimental to the community's goals. We don't see the area of Classen Avenue continuing to be zoned M11 as it is now. That, that area will be rezoned. We just ask that it be done in a way that is consistent with the community's goals. And finally, there is a comment raised by a previous speaker, Mr. Crassus, that somehow the community of Prospect Heights has been left out of this process. I just want to make sure the commission understands that through the five years that the community board has been working on this initiative, it's conducted numerous public meetings that have had over 200 people participate in them, including Mr. Crassus. And this project has been a subject of presentation at multiple community board meetings. It's been covered by New York City media. It's not unknown, so I wanted to clarify that for the benefit of the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Capelli.
It's a little bit off-topic, but I was curious as to how the charter changes of this past election affects the, your community board and the continuity there.
You know, I, I'm going to speak personally. The community board doesn't have a position on this for public, so speaking as a community board member, I, I would say I don't really understand the need for term limits on community boards. Term limits, if they're necessary, can be enacted already by borough presidents. They have the ability to change the membership of the community board at any time. And potentially, the term limits will cause the loss of institutional knowledge in community boards. In community board eight, we have members who have been serving for more than three decades. These people have extensive knowledge, detailed knowledge, in some cases, of practically every block in the district, and, and their, their experience is very useful when discussing projects like this. So I, I would not like to see that, that expertise be lost to community boards either. I, I think other types of reforms could be brought to community boards. The idea of having term limits for offices in the board potentially could, could, could be useful, but the reforms enacted by the charter, I don't, I, as a community board member, don't find are particularly useful.
Interesting. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. I, I, you know, in looking at the, the community board recommendations and looking at the conditions, I find it interesting that, you know, you speak to the remaining bulk being non-residential in use, but there's no specificity with respect to, you know, manufacturing versus retail versus, you know, commercial.
I'm, I'm sorry, which?
Space, so.
Which document are you looking at?
This is, oh, you know, I'm moving like between 1010 and 1050. My apologies. Actually, I'm looking at the 1010. So, so I, I guess what I'm trying to do is tease out the differences between one, you know, one approval with conditions and one in opposition, and how that might be in part because of the ground floor uses. What, what did you say then? What were the conditions on this building? And how do they relate back to the kinds of uses you'd like to see?
So I, I want to first make sure it's clear that counsel for the applicant has attended the M-Crown meetings either in person or through members of his staff for, I think, the last four years, and has access to all of the M-Crown documentation on uses. When the, when the committee, when the community board took the vote on this application, it was in that context that the applicant was asked, are you willing to commit to .25 FAR for light industrial uses as specified in the M-Crown documentation? And the answer was yes. That's not the case. That's, the vision for 1010 is quite different. The vision there is, is retail, as we mentioned, retail is not something that we're looking for on the side streets in the zone, we're looking for that on the avenues. And the amount of non-residential is relatively small compared to the bulk that they're requesting. So those two were quite different in the community board's view.
Okay, because there's no restriction on the kind of commercial use that we would see at this location. It could be retail, but it could also be manufacturing.
Right, so the, one of the objections that city planning has raised, that we've continued to try to be responsive to, is to try to, to try to strike a balance between the uses that are desired by the community and what is feasible economically for development. So as I said before, our requirement for light industrial is a rather modest one at this point. It's, it's .25 FAR. We do look to limit retail on the side streets. We do not look to limit other kinds of commercial uses that are non-retail. So office use is, is, is unrestricted, let's say. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we don't have a, there's no restriction, I mean, it's, we can't parse out retail versus commercial once we allow, you know, our commercial office space. Once we allow commercial, either one becomes an option. I mean, I feel like the only thing that would keep this from being retail is that it's not a great retail space.
I think, yeah, so we're talking about these applications specifically, and I'm sorry, I was speaking with respect to the community board's larger proposal to rezone the area. We recognize that 1050 could end up having retail in it.
Yeah, and that's, that's okay.
It's, it's a compromise the members of the community board were willing to make, given the appearance of this application and the ULP process, the commitment from the owner to use 25, or .25 FAR for light industrial, and a commitment to use MIH option one.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
Has the community board considered or asked the applicant for 1050 to enter into an agreement, given their verbal commitment prior to the community board's vote?
It's my understanding that those discussions are happening with the city council member. So, so the answer is no, the community board didn't pursue a formal agreement, but as I said, our understanding is the council member is, is having those discussions.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ficconi.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Faye Anne Batton.
Fayanne Baton from Shell Mobile PC for the applicant again. I just, I don't want to repeat comments that were made before. I know this has been going on for some time today. And I appreciate the community board's conditional approval. I just wanted to correct some of the record. As we understood, at the community board meeting, it would be 25% of the commercial space, not the .25 FAR, which does make a difference regarding the square footage of the MCROWN uses and the viability and the feasibility of having that open space on the ground floor. So we're, we spoke at the community board regarding the 25% of the MCROWN uses rather than a .25 FAR. And just to correct the record as well for option two, it's always been option two throughout, throughout the process, and I think this was raised before. Can't switch to option, you know, this was discussed by Richard and the applicant earlier, that we want to continue with option two and never committed to switching to option one. And we appreciate the time and consideration.
Commissioner Deloos.
I mean, I would, I appreciate you coming up to clarify that. I would just ask if that is a different understanding than what led the community board eight to vote yes with conditions that perhaps the community board follow up with the, with the commission to clarify. It seems like the community board's understanding of things and the applicant's understanding of things differ, which might have led to the vote as it was.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the only folks who are signed up for this hearing, but if anyone else would want to be heard, please come forward now. The public hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 42, CD6, C180481ZMM. A public hearing in a matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 245 East 53rd Street rezoning.
Our first speaker is the applicant, Jay Goldstein.
Good afternoon, chairman and commissioners. Thank you for having me today. I'm here today on behalf of 245 East 53rd Street Realty LLC for a zoning map amendment for this, for East 53rd Street between Second and Third Avenue to create a C25 commercial overlay. The project area, which is highlighted or circled in yellow dots, contains 27 properties along the stretch of property, along this stretch of East 53rd Street. My client owns the site that's highlighted in yellow. The proposal for you would create a C25 commercial overlay over the existing R8B zoning district, which has been a residential district mapped since zoning. It was R8 and then went to R8B. But given the nature of the street and the commercial ground floor and basement uses along this stretch of 53rd Street, we believe that the commercial overlay is appropriate. It doesn't change the bulk or density of the area, but the proposal just seeks to allow my client and some of the other properties on this block to match the uses that are already in place. My client's property was developed recently with a new six-story, 60 feet tall, 9,500 square foot building. Currently, it's ground floor community facility with upper floor is residential. The proposal will allow for ground floor commercial. There are approximately 1,500 square feet of ground floor with accessory cellar space. Here you see pictures of other properties along the block. As you can see, the ground floor for most of these properties is commercial, heavily commercial street. As noted by the BP, this is a significant commercial corridor, and I think it was mentioned as well in the Baytown East rezoning. Here's another, another picture of other properties on the street. So therefore, we believe that the street context does allow for commercial ground floor and residential above, which is what we're trying to accomplish through this rezoning. Of the 27 properties which are in this rezoning area, 23 are wholly located within the project area, of which 19 have pre-existing non-conforming uses. Those are the ones that are highlighted in pink. Through the rezoning, all of those properties will be brought into conformity, and we believe that the, allowing our client to utilize the ground floor for the same use also is a benefit that creates this commercial corridor with residential above, which the community board wanted as well and was supportive of as well. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Goldstein. Commissioner Levin.
No, I just have to say this, this is significant undertaking on the part of your client to achieve, legalize a whole bunch of people along the way to making productive use of your client's property. So, and I think the appropriateness of the request is demonstrated by the broad support you've gotten from the community board and the borough president. That doesn't usually happen. Does your client have a tenant yet for the commercial space? Who are they planning to put in there?
They don't have a tenant yet because, on my advice, don't, you know, until, until it's done, I don't want the responsibility of you entering a lease.
They haven't told you about it. They may have one, but they haven't told you.
Yeah. You know, restaurant use is very popular in this block. However, the C25 would give them the option of additional commercial uses, one of which I'm pushing is like boutique yoga studios, that type of use, which is also very popular and merges well with residential districts.
Okay. And is it occupied at the moment?
No.
You, you know, the legal use would be a community facility, but is anyone in there?
Right. The building's not occupied. The condo plan is, it's going to be a condo building, so the condo plan is being reviewed. There's no CFO yet because this is under construction.
Got it.
It'll be completed soon, but as of now, it's empty.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you very much.
Now, that was the only person signed up to speak on this. If anyone else wants to be heard, now would be the time. Public hearing is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers 43, 44, and 45. Calendar number 43, CD8, C180181ZMM. Calendar number 44, C180182ZMM. Calendar number 45, C180183ZMM. A public hearing in a matter of applications for the grant of special permits concerning the Rupert Brewery URA garages.
Our first speaker will be Ashley Dukas.
Good afternoon, chair and commissioners. I'm Ashley Dukas from Struck and Struck in the Van Land Use Council for the applicant of these three applications. These applications are requesting an increase in the number of parking spaces at the three existing garages located at Rupert Tower, Yorkville Tower, and Knickerbocker Plaza. These buildings with the garages were constructed in 1974 to 1975 in accordance with the Rupert Brewery Urban Renewal Plan. They're located between 90th and 92nd Streets, between Second and Third Avenues, in community board eight, which approved the applications. There's a number of additional benefits from these applications, including garage circulation, garage safety, and increase in bicycle parking spaces. These applications for the proposed increase in spaces meet the findings of Section 1345. Knickerbocker Plaza was analyzed under Section 1345A2 because it meets the 35% rule from an increase of 104 spaces to 202. Yorkville and Rupert garages did not meet the 35% threshold and were analyzed under Section 13451, which require a residential growth parking study. The parking study concluded that the increase at these garages was reasonable and not excessive under the zoning resolution findings. The proposed parking spaces, you can see on the chart, Rupert Tower, an increase of 150 from 202 to 370. Yorkville, an increase of 205 from 301 to 506. Knickerbocker, an increase of 98 from 104 to 202. Each garage will have three, has three electric charging stations. We are proposing an increase into the number of bicycle parking spaces, which I know that there was a number of questions and we can get to further. They, each garage will also be adding a stop sign and speed bump at the exit ramps and provide for proper pedestrian waiting areas and reservoir spaces. I will quickly run through the garage plans, but Seth Wright, our parking consultant, is here and can speak to you afterwards. This is the Knickerbocker garage entrance. Here is the site plan showing the entrance and reservoir spaces, and they are also the lower levels of Knickerbocker. This is the Yorkville Tower garage entrance. The site plan entrances, reservoir spaces of the entry floor, and then the lower levels of Yorkville. And this is Rupert Tower entry, the entry and reservoir spaces down to the garage with the lower levels.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Dukas. Commissioner Levin.
Let's see. Were there any additional slides you wanted to show us?
I, I wanted to discuss some bicycle parking numbers, and then I can, so I can go into you and...
So that was actually going to be my question. That's completely legit. Yeah, because the borough president has recommended an increase in bicycle park, well, actually, before we even get there, borough president also recommended an increase in number of electric charging stations, although I think, you know, that is a need that we all see coming in the future, may not, the demand may not quite be there. Are these garages all configured so that more charging stations could be added as demand arises in the future?
Yes, they are configured. They have the capacity and electric capacity to increase as demand increases.
Okay. You know, and I think there is an argument that if you put them in now, that would, that would prime the pump and, and feed the demand. So I'll just put that thought out there, that it would not be a stupid thing to increase electric charging stations, even if you don't see the use, if your client doesn't see the use happening now. But for me, more, well, I shouldn't, no, I'm not going to undercut myself. But the question of bike parking.
Yes.
Where is the bike parking being increased? The borough president wants you to put another 50 spaces in the Rupert garage. How is bike parking operated? Is there a charge for it? And how does it relate to the people who live in the building? How is it available to people who live in the building?
So the, there are currently bike parking available in the garages. It's around 20 or 21 spaces at each garage. We are increasing the, the bike parking, and it is shown on the plans. I know it's really small, but there are allocated spaces for bike storage. In Knickerbocker, we are increasing the bike to, storage to 151 bike spaces. In Rupert, increasing to 37, and Yorkville increasing to 74 spaces. There's also existing bike storage within each building, a significant amount, 281 in Yorkville and Knickerbocker, 281, and Knicker, Yorkville and Rupert have 281, and Knickerbocker has 138 spaces. So there's...
If you could, because this is a lot of numbers...
Yes, I will submit.
Submit a list, and with respect to the increase, give us what the base is, and then what the increase is. And the other thing that would be helpful with respect to the spaces within the buildings, the number of units in each of the buildings.
Yes. My chart in front of me has units and spaces, and I was, I hope, submitting afterwards in response to these questions.
Okay, yeah, no, so let's, let's not take up today's time with, it'd be easier for you to give those to us in writing, but I hope the information also indicates how many of the internal spaces are used. Is there excess demand?
Yes.
Given the number of units. So put that in your letter.
Yes, we have that. In terms of the usage within the building, Yorkville is, only recently, has been used to its full at the 281 spaces, and anyone in the building who doesn't have room in Yorkville can use any other of Knickerbocker or Rupert's within their building or within their garage.
Okay.
So there is availability.
So for the spaces in the garage?
Yes.
How are they operated? Is there a charge for that space?
Yes, there is a charge.
What is the charge?
$100 a month.
Okay. How much of it is used?
It is not used, except for now, this one space of the rollover from the Yorkville overcapacity.
Yeah, and I would, I would suggest it's not used because that's just not a realistic price for, yeah. And your, and your client is not alone in pricing it this way.
So, yeah, we, we heard your comments on Monday, and we are in discussion, and we can also follow up with writing with a suggestion.
Yeah, I think a minimum of favorable pricing opportunity for people who live in the building would be highly desirable.
Understandable.
Commissioner Capelli?
Commissioner Levin asked that. It was answered.
Great. Commissioner Ortiz.
Along those lines, what is the pricing structure for the residential bike parking, if there is one?
Yes, there is a fee of $50 per year.
Okay. Okay. So we'd need...
And there's available spaces there, but we, you know, we, we understand your comments and concerns, and we are, we'll...
Yeah, I just think it's a great opportunity to encourage the use of bike parking. I mean, what if this garage operator was waving the banner of making bike parking available? That'd be a great thing.
Understood. Thank you. At a reasonable price.
On realistic, you know, on terms that it would actually be used. I don't know a single garage in Manhattan that has it that's realistic, I mean, that is really used.
Okay.
So you could, you could be the, you could be the pathfinder here.
I hope so.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Dukas.
Thank you, chair.
Our next speaker is Seth Wright.
Hi, my name is Seth Wright. I worked on the design of the garages to fit the reservoir spaces and, and locate the speed bumps and all that. So if you have any questions related to the access or the operation, I can go through that with you. If not, then...
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Ortiz.
On, on the bike parking, where is it located? And is there, are there similar requirements to post pricing for, for bike parking?
I'm pretty sure that on the sign that says, you know, like $300 for this car or SUV, it says on there also, bike parking is $100 a month.
I checked with our Department of Consumer Affairs, and their approach is a disclosure requirement that it needs to be posted at the entry.
Right. The bike parking that's being added in Rupert is right above the line of cars, so that area is being bollarded off, and it would be a large space for new racks, because right now, they just have cars parked in there. But since we've gone through and located reservoir spaces, they can't have cars there anymore. So that area is going to be a big pedestrian waiting area and bike racks.
Okay. And since you do this for a living, I'm curious, you know, what is necessary to, you know, encourage use? I mean, there's short-term bike parking, which someone's going to tie themselves up to a post outside, right?
Right, but overnight, you might not see it again.
Yeah, you don't want to leave your bike out on the street, and, you know, internally, are there certain protections, enclosed areas? Like what, what makes for, you know, bike parking?
To work.
To, yeah.
Well, I design car parking garages, but I do think that, you know...
Well, we're hoping you're going to add bike parking to that.
It's becoming a thing, yes. I, I think that if you, if you make the area visible and you don't make the attendant, I think a lot of it is the garage operators don't want to like, their guy have to deal with the bike, right? So if you put the bike somewhere where they can't see it, if they're in a place where they can like lock them up, where visually they're inside a building, so they're not getting stolen on the street, but they don't, they don't get in the way of operation, right? So they're, they're close to the front, you know, you can wave to whoever, attendant guy, and get your bike, that they know who you are, and you go out, then it's like, it's, it's not bothering them. So it's like, just take a couple extra dollars. But when you, when you have to like have him go, and then you've got a resident who's paying $500 a month, have to wait for this, that becomes an issue. So I think they're like struggling with like pricing it so they get people, but then not messing with their real money. So, I don't know. These are on the record things.
I guess, I guess the question is what degree of additional security, you know, in a way, in a building, they're often, you know, in rooms where residents then have keys to get into the bike room.
Well, certainly, like, because this building, like Ashley said, it has available spaces for $50 a year. So the idea that a resident would decide...
Well, not all of them. York...
True, true. So you would have to go to a different building's bike room, but you have to go down to the garage anyway. So you have to go somewhere else. You can't just take your, take your elevator down to the bike room. So to go to the other building, yes, not as convenient, but certainly for 50 bucks a year, convenient, right? And so, so because there's still availability there, then I see it not being quite, you know, city, there's, there's over 100 city bikes within a block of this, because I just looked it up before. And so I think that like that idea of like sharing, just with the cars, people don't really feel the need to own a bike and throw it up on their wall like I did when I was a kid, you know? Because certainly if we left it on the street, it's not there in the morning. In the East Village in 1980, it was gone. So, so, right, so I think it's like, it may be coming, but the more like shared systems that keep happening, like with cars too, everything is like not needing to everyone have their own. So I think if the, if the, if the building was filled, and all the spaces were filled in the building for the bikes, in the private rooms, you know, where you go and your key, then certainly there would be an opportunity for these garages to really feel like this is an opportunity for them. But right now, it's not. And so that's why you're seeing this all across the board. It's not yet an opportunity, and it may never get there. If City Bike continues to like, you know, just... If city bike continues to, like, you know, just take it out and go, and you don't need to worry about it. So I don't know.
Yeah, you raised a really good point I hadn't thought about, but then I also think about families with kids and the city bike, you know, the size of the city bike doesn't allow you to store your kids' bikes.
Sure. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, you know, if you don't want your kids' bikes in your home, you want a place to store them. So that's like...
Yeah, mine was, like, up on my window, like, hanging, right?
Yeah.
On hooks.
But, no, you, you raise a good point, so thank you.
I'd also ask, additional useful information could be for the three buildings, going back maybe five years, and what the utilization rate of the bicycle parking was. Because obviously, the city has become more bicycle-friendly with more and more lanes. And so the question is whether it is trending up and the other buildings are going to reach capacity, or whether the city bike effect shows it trending down.
Right. Of ownership. Right, exactly.
Commissioner Levin.
I want to return to the cars for a minute.
I can help with that.
If I understand this application, what we're really being asked to do is to adjust the special permit to fit the number of cars that have actually been parking there for some time?
Right. So the, the original, the original CFOs, we believe to be like a self-park 1970 version of it. And the demand, over time, has increased to the point of now they're over that self-park, and they, the operator has demand so that the residents want more than that, right? And so we're here to, to go through the findings to show more than that is not a problem.
So how did this come to, why are you doing this now? Why didn't it happen when the operator stopped having it be self-park and allowed more cars to get crammed in there?
Do you want to jump in?
Yeah, sure.
Can you jump in?
I'm sorry, people are not able to come back. If you could follow up in writing with us on that.
I can follow up in writing.
Yeah, what was the reason for this now?
Yeah. Did you get busted, or?
Probably.
Okay. Maybe, maybe there's a refinancing going on or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. Okay. But nonetheless, it is, it is important to have the reality, you know, have the documents reflect the reality, so, thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
I just appreciate your candor.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Candor? Then we thank you. And those are the only folks who have signed up to speak on this matter, but if anyone else wants to be heard, please come forward now. Okay, the public hearing is closed. And Madam Secretary, any other business?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Hearing is over.